I'm going to call to order the December 3rd, 2024 meeting of Eugene Water and Electric Board. And we'll start with an agenda check. Any items to be changed or? Nope. Just want to call out that one of our board members, John Brown, is joining us by remotely. And so when I'm looking in the back, that's what I'm looking for is just checking in with him. Items from board members and general manager, the items from board members. Yeah.
Appreciate it. The Kieran Substation ribbon cutting. I'll do a good job and exciting that that is up and running. I wanted to also acknowledge the Eugene Chamber Economic Summit. We've all just went to that too. So good event. Great place to connect with people. And then I want to do a quick update on El Cog. So El Cog has an annual dinner in March on the 7th. And the nominations for people who are elected or staff that are doing great work are open. So please check that out if there's somebody you have in mind. Like you said, it's on, the dinner is on March 7th. It's at the Cottage Grove Armory. And El Cog is also has a campaign where they're doing donations for Senior Meals on Wheels. And then the other El Cog related item that I just wanted to put out there is that I'm currently have been serving as the chair and it's a two-year term. So when we do the voting in January, I'd love to continue that. If you vote me out, that's fine, but somebody else is going to have to be chaired. So. And then also wanted to note that the celebration of business is at the end of January and that that is, I think the registration is open for that. Finally, I just wanted to say how exciting it is that the Run to Stay Warm actually sold out for the first time. How amazing is that? So thanks everybody who came out for that. Thanks.
Barowski?
Thank you. I also attended a couple of things that Sonia mentioned, the Economic Summit and the ribbon cutting. Matt did a great job with the scissors, didn't run with them or anything like that. I also had an opportunity to go up to College Hill and watch one of the blasts. And it was interesting and unspectacular. But the staff was up there. There were, there were a handful of neighbors that were standing around and checking it out. I think things are going well up there. It's quite a, quite an operation. So I'm not sure how many more days of blasting they have, but they've been doing it at 3:30 in the afternoon. So go up and feel the ground shake a little bit.
Thanks. Anything from you, Brown?
Yeah, number one, I just typed chat that I can't find the option to raise my hand. So just if you don't mind asking me at the end of all that, I know that it's an easy way to silence me, but anyhow. I attended the OPEB meeting. I think I recall sending an email out just in case this technology didn't work. But bottom line is that the fund, it's about a $17 million fund that manages post employee, the retirees. Medical benefits is doing really well and our cash obligation this year will be much less than it was last year. And so barring anything happening, things are good. That's all I have.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you.
I'll just say that it was fun to see the current substation open. I've never wielded such a large pair of scissors, which was really a monumentous event in my life. And, and thank you for the opportunity and for trusting me with such large scissors. And there might be some other acknowledgement coming later, but I want to take the opportunity to thank you, sir, for your service here at EWEB. And I know I'm going to be bummed to see you depart. I'm sure there are others in that camp, but thanks for your service. Really appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate the kind words.
Yeah. Frank?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, we'll get to that. We'll, we'll get to both of them in a minute. Very long from now. Good evening, commissioners. Appreciate being here. Appreciate your participation in a number of different events over the last month. I wanted to acknowledge the fact that a very large number of EWEB people started work on Wednesday evening before the Thanksgiving Day break and worked pretty much continuously to transition our customer system, our finance system, our customer portal, our GIS system, which manages our remote assets. And prepared for a go live with the new systems effective yesterday morning. And I wanted to appreciate their dedication. It was a worldwide effort. Actually, we had people in, in India and other places supporting us pretty much around the clock to transition these systems that were originally put in the last millennia back in the 1900s. And so I wanted to acknowledge the people that spent a tremendous amount of their, their holiday weekend doing that. And also appreciate Travis and Julie and Deborah for their leadership on this project that we've been preparing for, for about two years now. And so this is the first season. We'll, we'll now go into continuous improvement mode and but we were able to support customers, manageable queue times. A lot of people have transitioned to our new system already. So really wanted to acknowledge their work. So thank you to everybody who spent working on that. That's it.
All right. Then moving on to.
Not, not moving on yet.
All right.
No, not quite.
Yes. Previously referenced Giants pair of scissors.
So Commissioner McCray, I'll, I'll pass it over to the Vice President here in just a second. We, we have something for you. But I just on behalf of, of staff, wanted to thank you for your leadership and your devotion to the position and for helping us navigate through some challenging issues during your, your term here. We're going to miss you. Appreciate all the, all the things and all the guidance and all the words of wisdom and all the actions that you've taken. And so on behalf of the staff, wanted to thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. We've got a little something here for you, but before I bring it over and give it to you, I just want to say thanks to you again. We came on together. We kind of drank out of the same fire hose for the first couple of years. I appreciate the insights that you, that you bring. And I just want you to know that some of the key issues that you are hoping, we're hoping to move this board through and this utility through. I will help champion those on after you're gone because I think we, we align pretty closely on a lot of those issues. So just know that what you brought to the table is still on the table and will be moved, hopefully we'll be moving forward as, as we go on. So with that.
Thank you. But there, I think you can open it. That's what I was afraid of. I'm pretty sure that this can be very embarrassing, whatever is the box.
Well, it's after 3:30. So the explosions are over.
Oh, good. It is a whack. Yeah. Thanks all. Very kind with the coin. Thank you. It's really nice. And yeah, I'll see if he works later today. John? I can't see his hand. So I'm just, just, just guessing. Nothing from him. Yes, please, Mindy.
I just want to say what a pleasure it's been serving on this board with you, Matt. You are truly somebody who lives by your values and I respect that and I'm honored to have served beside you. And we're going to miss you, but thank you for your invaluable contribution. You've helped make this board better.
Thanks, Mindy. I appreciate that. Thank you. Sure.
Miss you too. Thank you so much for everything. It's been nice sitting next to you and I'm going to get triggered. So I'll, I'll stop. We'll see you again. Don't be a stranger. If there are things that you care about, don't hesitate to reach out. So very much value your.
Thank you. Thank you, Sonia.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. And you, you will have the opportunity once a month to come back and take up to three minutes if you'd like to provide testimony in the future. So. We had one more. And so I did want to give commissioners the opportunity to, this is Rod Price's last board meeting. For how long? I'm not so, I'm not sure, but wanted to thank Rod for his service to EWEB. Our community started in 1999. Is that, is that Rod? Right, Rod? With, with EWEB and has done a number of different things for the utility throughout the years and been a really great thought partner and one of those people that it's not just what he did, but how he did it that mattered. And so he set a really great example. So thank you, Rod. I have one of these three too.
Number one, it is. Thank you. Appreciate the kind words. Just so fortunate to be able to work here in a place like this with all these people. And really appreciate the faith you've, you've put in me. So I couldn't ask for anything. Except maybe a.
Giant scissors.
Yeah, where are those giants?
It's been not in this. Thank you. Safety first. All right. Again, thank you very much. We're twins. It feels good, but no, really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you kindly. All right. And on to our next topic. Yeah. Oh, sorry. Yes.
No, excuse me. I, they gave me a sequence to raise my hand. I raised my hand and then it just got blown by. I don't know if you can see it or not, but just for future. My hand showing, being raised on the screen?
It is now. Yes. And sorry, I missed that.
Okay. All right. No, that, that's cool. Cause I was going to comment on you. You know, I wouldn't going to let that pass and, but I'm not going to cry. I, I do go back from that 30 years ago. And all there is, um, thank you for your stepping up and doing, I know it's a big sacrifice of time and everything, and I really appreciate what you've done. And same thing with you, Rod. I think I sent an email earlier, but you're going to be missed. And I really appreciate you bringing things down to my level. Because I know that's not easy to do, but you get it. You're very responsive and you're very kind in your response. And all that, which greatly appreciate. So both of you guys are going to be missed, but I'm sure that you're going to have fun doing whatever you're going to do. So thank you very much.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
Right. The fact that I'm going to move on to our next item, which is public input. We have three people signed up. They're all in person. All right. So we have four people signed up to provide testimony. All four are here in person. So there's nobody calling in, which makes it a little bit easier. I'm going to very quickly hit on the safety awareness briefing that I neglected to do earlier and then speak to public input. So just want to thank folks for being here tonight and remind you that EWEB management and subject matter experts are present in the room. And virtually the meeting is being livestreamed and recorded. Public testimony is welcome. Sign up forms are at the back of the room. If you are here to sign, to provide testimony and you haven't signed up yet, please do so before we get started here. Visitor access is limited to the boardroom and the restrooms. The restrooms are located on this floor. Exit through the interior door at the back of the room and a security officer will direct you to the location. In the event of emergency, please follow instructions by staff. And then going to just guidance on public input, you can see some of it's up here on the, on the screen in front of you, just to help provide guidance if this is your first time. EWEB is a public not-for-profit organization whose charter is to deliver drinking water and electricity to our community. Although this forum is not used for an open back and forth dialogue, commissioners and staff very much value hearing diverse perspectives and receiving community input. Speakers are asked to keep their testimony relevant to EWEB business and request that everyone share their comments in a productive and respectful manner. Should speakers or audience members become disruptive, they may be muted and/or removed from the meeting. At this time, we have four folks here in person. When you're called, you have up to three minutes to provide your comments. There's a timer at the front of the room here to help you keep track. And the public input session is now open and we're going to start with Danny Noonan. And after that will be Cherie Bornman.
Good evening. You can hear me. Okay. I can hear myself. Okay. Through the microphone. Thank you, President McCray and EWEB commissioners. Appreciate the opportunity to comment. My name is Danny Noonan. I'm a climate and energy strategist with the local nonprofit organization Breach Collective, and I am a resident of Ward Seven in the Whittaker. Yesterday evening, I received correspondence from General Manager Lawson regarding the letter that was sent to EWEB commissioners by a coalition of 18 organizations in July of this year. Given the timing of this correspondence and the draft rate design plan discussion that's on this evening's agenda, I decided to attend this evening's meeting in order to offer an initial personal response to that letter. While it has been encouraging to see EWEB commissioners and staff engage with our coalition's recommendations and advocacy over the last six or so months, I was disappointed by how some of our recommendations have been framed in subsequent discussions and are now seemingly at risk of being precluded from further exploration in the rate design process. Specifically, General Manager Lawson wrote that EWEB's draft rate design plan, quote, reflects the Board of Commissioners' preference for structuring rates around a dual philosophy of cost and behavior-based principles, rather than basing rates on socially driven goals or outcomes, end quote. This would appear to contradict Commissioner Lawson's own comments during the October 2nd meeting that these three philosophies, while in tension with each other and creating a trilemma, are not mutually exclusive in rate design. This framing also looks past the fact that socially driven goals like low income assistance are already an accepted and uncontroversial feature of EWEB's rate design. Yet this framing serves to constrain further discussion around how best to design and provide low income assistance. This is particularly disappointing to see at a time when investor-owned utilities in Oregon are responding to community advocacy at the PUC by expanding and improving their low income assistance programs. It also feels somewhat misleading for Commissioner Lawson to lump together both our proposal for a percentage of income payment program as a potential alternative to EWEB's existing low income assistance and income graduated fixed charges as a potential component of rate design as amounting to a general proposal for, quote, income-based rates. That is simply to say that EWEB could include these mechanisms within a rate design that still predominantly adheres to cost and behavior-based principles. Additionally, EWEB staff and commissioners' heavy focus on incentivizing customer behavior through rates continues to overlook one of the core characteristics of our community, namely that Eugene has both a very high proportion of renters and a very low vacancy rate. This gives the average renter very little agency over the energy efficiency and weatherization of their dwelling and the ability to which they can change their behavior through incentives. I'm out of time. That's been my personal experience as a renter. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Noonan. Next is Cherie Bornman, followed by Tana Shepherd.
Hi, my name is Cherie Bornman, and I just want to be able to introduce myself in regards to the educational grants. I'm the new coordinator from Bethel School District for the educational grants that EWEB helps to support some of the learning for many of our students. We're just so appreciative of these because it brings real life lessons into the classroom for students as well as getting students on field trips out into the real world, real world, just to learn so much more about the energy, renewable, non-renewable energy and water and things that really relate to their whole lives. So just wanted to say thank you and introduce myself. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Tana Shepherd, followed by Mark Rubenwitz.
All right. Good evening, commissioners, and thanks, Matt and Rod, for your service. It's been a pleasure being in so many meetings with you. I'm Tiana Shepherd, otherwise known as EcoChuck. Welcome to me, to this place today. I'm here to talk about a couple of things, but primarily just to fill you in on what's happening right now and then kind of looking into the future. We just finished our last salmon education field trip today and we have our release trips next week at Alton Baker. Y'all are invited. We're there Monday through Friday and then nine to one, we'll be there every day. So feel free to drop by. It's a public park. And so we don't have to have special permissions for this and we'd love to see you there with the kids. Also this Friday, the Climate Justice Team is working on their annual clothing swap and it's for high schoolers with a focus on fast fashion and you know, resource wastefulness through that process. And so that's something that they've been doing every year and that's happening this week too. And then, as I mentioned, the release trips already. And then after the new year, we'll be gearing up for the electric vehicle challenge. It's a long process to get that going. And then wind energy, energy starts up as well and other energy projects and water projects in the, in the classrooms. And then I wanted to just look forward. I understand that y'all received a memo lately about the grants and the extension of grants coming up. And there's a proposal of a phase one, phase two process, which I'm heavily in support of, especially after the pause with the COVID. It was a challenge to meet all of the grant goals within the five years. So having an extra two to kind of catch up and shore up anything and then look to the future for the next five is really beneficial, especially having new coordinators in McKenzie and Bethel. It can kind of help catch everybody up and we can get on the same page. That feels pretty exciting. Dara Brennan also from Springfield is supportive as well. She can't be here today. So essentially it's a great idea. Oh, that's not my timeout. Okay. I was like, all right. And essentially it'll just allow us to collaborate more, bring the new people on board and, and get our, our ducks in a row and our squirrels out of the cage. And the phase two will help us hone in on a more localized approach to our education program and have some similar lessons across our districts that we can complement our curriculum. We acknowledge our curriculums are very different in each of the districts. So having complementary lessons rather than a full curricula would be more welcome to our teachers. And so we look forward to creating those things together as a team. It's been lovely working with Claire and so we appreciate her support. And yeah, that's kind of just where I'm at. And I'm going to take my three minutes, but I'm excited to just kind of be moving past salmon into our education piece. And yeah, salmon was very successful this year. So John, I hope you heard that. All right. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Tana. Next is Mark Rubenwitz, followed by Alan Gormozano.
Okay, for outgoing Commissioner Matt McCray, thanks again for helping bring Richard Heinberg of Post Carbon Institute to Eugene. I wish, however, that our institutions had been able to hear anything that he says about limits to growth on a finite planet and why this requires us to rewrite plans, change laws, the structures of our communities' function and radically increase the amount of cooperation. In the, around 2008, we had a stay of execution around concerns that peak energy would constrict our society with the startup of hydraulic fracking as a means to scrape the bottom of the barrel, the oil barrel for extraction in Texas and the Rockies and Appalachians. Oregon's tiny natural gas field near Astoria has been depleted and it's not the right geology for fracking, nor is Prudhoe Bay in Alaska. Prudhoe Bay has declined more than three fourths since its peak in 1988, which is of concern to anyone who relies on trucks bringing food to grocery stores. These and other warnings about the polycrisis, limits to growth, climate chaos, overconsumption, overpopulation are not happy messages about our techno-utopian future. To paraphrase Albert Einstein, passing the limits to growth has changed everything, save our mode of thinking. Thus we drift toward catastrophe. He was talking about the splitting of the atom, but it applies beyond that. The adoption of large-scale burning of unnatural gas as the backbone of the electric grid has been due to the rise of fracking. Now fracking is the largest energy source for the Western, Eastern and Texas grids, which EWEB never mentions in its public literature to the public. How about mentioning Western Electric Coordinating Council, which EWEB is part of, for broader understanding of where we are at? There is a debate in the geology community about how long fracking will last. But even if it lasts another decade or two, it's a temporary blip on human history. And regardless of which geologist is right, it's just another boom and bust. In 2000, David Brower, one of the greatest environmentalists, gave his farewell speech to the Environmental Law Conference at U of O. He said that at our best, we've slowed down the rate that things get worse, and this was not good enough for our survival. Now, thanks to baby steps, collective denial and a profound lack of courage, we will all face the consequences. So think about future generations of all species. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Alan Gormozano, followed by Joe Mall.
Hello again, and thank you for honoring the fact that I rode here on a bicycle through the freezing cold to get here and walked in later than I thought I would. Thank you for having me talk. So a few things I want to talk about. I've been here many times. You know me. I've seen some of you outside of here in public places. And it's been wonderful to have a human interaction with some of you. These meetings seem to be set up. It becomes very impersonal and you know, a lot of times I talk about the cost of just looking at efficiency versus the cost of human health and, and how it affects humans on a daily basis. And right now we're faced with an incoming government that is going to create a department that I'm going to call DOGE, Department of Government Efficiency, which is going to be focused on efficiency, efficiency, efficiency. And being someone who just joined that quote privileged rank of seniors on a fixed income, I look at that might just be disappearing very soon because of their focus on efficiency, efficiency, efficiency without look, looking at the human costs, the human values. So those of you who do look at those things, thank you. One area that's, you know, because obviously I've been involved with the fight against getting the smart meters put on our house against our will. And a lot of people feel like we're being punished, you know, over that with certain rate increases or people having to have the broadcasting turned on when they don't want it turned on. I fortunately didn't have to have it turned on because I gave in. But, um, you know, one place to help low income people such as me, such as some of the other people in our group is, you know, for those of us who don't want the broadcasting turned on, instead of charging us extra for the meter readers coming out, which we've already been paying for all along, don't add that onto our bill. That's one way to make it easier for some of us low income people. And definitely look at some way, let's, let's get on it, get these raids down for those of us who are struggling. Cause we really, really would like to keep our electricity going. And I'm sure you don't want to see us out in the cold, even though you make me ride here on a bicycle in the cold. But thank you very much. And again, thank you to the ones of you who I've seen out in public. I'm not going to name any names. Thank you.
Thanks, Ellen. And thanks for riding all the way out here in the cold. And last is Joe Mall.
Thanks, Chairman McCray. For the record, Joe Mall, representing McKenzie River Trust. I come today simply to say thank you in part for your leadership. I understand this is your last meeting. Anybody else's last meeting? Just you. 20 years ago this week, I accepted the job as Executive Director of the McKenzie River Trust. And I've said it before, but it's worth repeating that there's no way that either the McKenzie River Trust, the Watershed Councils in this area, the Soil and Water Conservation District and a number of other organizations that work on behalf of the rivers, not just the McKenzie, but the community would be nowhere near where we are without the leverage that investments by Eugene Water and Electric Board made before 20 years ago, but certainly since that time. So I just want to thank you again for that. We'll continue to come back as we develop more partnership work for the Coast Fork and Middle Forks with the, that coinciding with the new water plant, I think the opportunities to invest again, looking upstream. I think the opportunities to invest again, looking upstream, will be strong there. But I also wanted to present you, and perhaps presenting this with the chair, with a copy of something called "Life on the River." This was something that Barry Lopez wrote on our behalf after the acquisition of the Finn Rock Reach area back in 2016 and 2017. This is something that was hand-printed by Lungus Press. It was a press that came out of the University of Oregon years ago. And this is one of, I think, six copies that Barry signed directly to the Eugene Water and Electric Board, and it has sat in a box post-COVID and post-move. And then I realized we still had it, so I thought it would be appropriate to do that. So I don't know if it's appropriate to approach the board to present this, but it's simply to say thank you, and we'll continue to work together on these things. Thanks, Joe.
All right, thank you. Moving on to the next item on our agenda, which is correspondence. Oh, I'm sorry. I'll take a moment if any of the board members would like to provide comments related to testimony tonight. Yeah.
Thank you to all of you for coming out on this cold evening. On the rate design topic, I just wanted to note that, I think we're now, now that the IT system has been launched, that's been a major product and kind of an impediment, but it's something that was started years and years and years ago. And in order to do full rate design overview and look, we needed to have that project complete. So that was a major step in the process. And I know we're voting on rates this evening and the budget for the next year, but when I think of rate design, I think of a much longer-term process. And so I don't, I just want to make sure that it's understood that's a longer-term outlook in terms of our design and the process we're going to be taking. So it's not just, nope, it's happening tonight. And then, very excited to hear about the new educator for Bethel. And thank you, Sherri, for coming out, and Tana for coming out. I always love hearing about what we're doing in the schools, and I appreciate your insight on that document, because I wasn't sure where you're at. So I'm glad that that is something that's actually beneficial to the program, because I think that's a key thing that we do, and it's something unique to us being a public utility. And I want to continue to support that. So I'm very happy that that is a positive for you. And then thank you to the others for coming out and sharing your opinions, and to Joe Mall.
Great, thanks. Yeah, Mindy?
Just really briefly, I think this was our most varied public input that we've had in a really long time. And I know that we often don't, we don't engage in a back and forth, but I just want to say that we really value you coming and talking to us. And I understand to frustration of people where you feel like you're just talking at us, and you don't get anything back, and that feels pretty icky. But we do really listen to you, and we value what you have to say. So thank you all for coming out.
Thanks, Mindy. Brown, anything from you?
No, I'm good, thank you.
All right. I would just echo Mindy's comments that we don't take the time for a back and forth here, but really do appreciate the comments and y'all taking the time to be here and let us know what's on your minds. All right, moving on to correspondence.
Thank you, President McRae. Before I get into that, I will also just say that staff very much considers public input when we bring things to Commissioners. And this was one of the more diverse set of topics that we heard about this evening and appreciated them. And also, we'll take that and run with those comments, and we listen to those comments. And some of these are longer-term issues, some of them are complex issues, and we'll have a number of opportunities and a number of touch points on many of these topics. So look forward to lots more interaction going forward. On the correspondence front, Commissioners, there were four items of correspondence this evening. There were really three informational items having to do, in many cases, with year-end events. You also noticed that the education grant update was included with that. We've got some work coming up there and some feedback that we've received from Commissioners in particular around messaging and education of safety and emergency preparedness, which we want to reemphasize going forward. And so, and again, some year-end issues. The one that we're asking for some guidance on, and it doesn't necessarily have to be this evening, it could be during our check-ins, had to do with some of the themes and areas of opportunities that we see going into 2025. We recognize that as an organization, there is some trade-off between focus and number of things that you want to do. And so, any opportunities that you can, or comments that you want to make regarding what might be a priority for you as individuals prior to the group discussion in January around the 2025 organizational goals would be helpful. Like I said, that could be either this evening or personally when we have our one-on-one check-ins. Either of those would be fine. So, President McRae, I'll just turn it back to you and see if there's any comments or questions coming out of these items.
Great, thanks. Comments, questions?
Thank you. Yeah, I went over all of them, and they, I'm fine with that. The one thing in the organizational goals, and I'm sure you've got it, but I think it's something that kind of has risen to the top of my thoughts with Assistant GM Bryce leaving, is the transition that we have of leadership in the organization. And, you know, I've had this happening in my business as well. You know, you lose key members. Do we, you know, what is the strategy that we have going forward? We all know our workforce is aging, and a lot of institutional knowledge will be leaving this organization and many organizations over the next several years. And I think that that would be something that would be, I would like to know that we've got a plan for it, and we're looking at that. And so that was something that would be important to me to see moving forward, because we have an example right across the table from us that there's a big, big hole that when somebody at that position leaves, that I know that the organization will be able to fill, but knowing that there's a strategic way of going about that would be helpful for me. That was one of the things that I would like to see.
Great, thanks. Mindy?
In terms of the education grants, I'm very pleased to see that we have safety and emergency preparedness. I think that partnering with the schools is a great way for kids to maybe help get their parents more invested, and it's like a direct way to convey information. So I'm really happy to see that.
On the education contract, just a little bit more, I'm excited to see that. I also hope that that doesn't mean that we are losing the other, you know, engaging programs that I think really draw kids in around the EV cars, things that are really tactile. So in the way that we, you know, however that is thought out, that it's still tactile, engaging, something that brings the kids in. Thank you.
Great, thanks. Anything from you, John?
I'm good, thank you. I apologize, I'm having some audio. Every once in a while, I don't get to hear everything that came said, but I'm doing my best to apologize.
All right, thanks. All right, moving on to the next item then, which would be Approval of Consent Calendar A.
Move to approve?
Move to approve by Carlson and second by Schlossberg. And question from Borowski?
Poll number two.
All right, so Borowski's in a poll number two. Right, move by Carlson to approve Consent Calendar A minus number two, seconded by Schlossberg, all in support of that motion. Say aye? Aye. All right, passes unanimously, number two, Mr. Borowski.
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of pull this, just to shine a little light on it. Maybe let staff talk about it a little bit. We got a little bit of a background on it, but this is an $18 million over 10-year contract for the decommissioning of Lieber. So to me, this is a, you know, we've made some great steps going forward with the decommissioning action plan. But to me, now this is starting to get real. You know, when you start budgeting $18 million, we're starting to get real. So I kind of got a good feel of what this is entailing. It's bringing on consultants that are experts in the field to help us with this. I'm just wondering if staff wanted to just give a little bit of an update on this contract before we approve it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Borowski. You actually jumped ahead in the agenda to item seven. So President McRae will be able to skip that item. I recognized, and management pulled this for discussion, given the exact reasons that Commissioner Borowski had mentioned. I just would like Lisa Krentz to provide a little bit of an introduction to what this topic entails. It is a multi-year, multitask-based, task-order-based contract. And so I'll just pass the mic to her.
Thank you, Frank. Good evening, Commissioners. Yeah, we wanted to pull this one because it is such a sizable contract for such a complicated project. So we are bringing the contract for you for approval tonight. The specific scope is around program management and owner's representation throughout the Lieber decommissioning process, which is why it's a longer contract than usual at 10 years rather than five, because we want to make sure that we're able to maintain consistency throughout this comprehensive process towards decommissioning. We did go through a public RFP process, a very comprehensive one. And I personally am incredibly excited to put forth MacMillan for this work. MacMillan is a very well-suited firm for this process. They have extensive decommissioning experience nationwide, including recently a primary role in the decommissioning of the Klamath dams to great success. They have, they're highly regarded throughout the industry. They have absolutely stellar recommendations from those who have worked with them. It is, again, a sizable contract and a long contract, but I couldn't be more pleased with the result. Mark, and Jeremy, and Quentin, and I are all here to answer specific questions you might have about the scope of services. But that was the general sort of intro I wanted to lay out for this contract.
Great, thank you. Are there specific questions? And then, actually, can I go to Brown real quick? Mr. Brown, Commissioner Brown, you have your hand up, go ahead.
Yeah, I do, thank you. Just a couple of questions. Number one, a comment that in my long tenure on this board, I've never seen as much as $30 million of contracts on the consent calendar. So that kind of raised a little flag for me, but I guess it's, we're getting into that. But just a thought that it's monumental. Lisa, a question about this, are they just going to manage other people? Or are they going to do some of the work? Let's talk about right-of-way or EIS, environmental impact statements. I mean, they are going to actually do that work? Or are they going to just oversee the work so we could expect additional contracts on top of this with other service providers?
Yeah, very good question, Commissioner Brown. I'll take a stab at it, and then I'll see if Jeremy and Mark want to weigh in. So the way that we've focused this contract is with a lot of flexibility. So they are to provide overall program management and owner's representation. But the team that MacMillan has put together includes their team. They have extensive geotechnical engineering and construction management experience. They have also put together subconsultants who are very experienced in the environmental field and also in the legal process for FERC. So the way the scope of services was written is that we have the ability to write task orders for specific projects if their team is, seems well-suited to perform that work. They will be providing the overall program management, helping us throughout the process, but there might be some specific engineering design or other types of projects that they are suited for. And if so, we would approve it or ask to approve a task order for that. Mark, Jeremy, do you want to add to that?
I'm going to say, I think you did, you know, summarize that quite well. And we do expect in some of their subject matter areas that they will help us with some design development, preparing permit applications, thing like that. So there will be some actual work out of them, you know, in addition to strategic and program support.
Yeah, and then I would just add one more thing. It seems unlikely to me that we would get through this really complex, you know, $180 million project without the need for some additional consultant support along the way. That we have yet to identify, and will come once we have, you know, further developed the plans.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Mark, did you have some?
With respect to that, they certainly will be our partners in managing those additional consults that we might bring on for subject matter expertise that we need in addition to what MacMillan's capable of doing. But they are very broad in there and deep in there.
Great, thanks, Borowski. Go ahead, Brown, if you have follow-up questions.
No, that's just to answer my questions. I just wanted to know, kind of, kind of wanted to know just what they were going to do, and that gave me a really good idea of what the future boards can expect.
Great, thanks.
Thank you. So that opens another question then. So if they have some, another, we need another thing, and they're able to do it, would that mean that it would go out for another RFP, or would they automatically get that bid?
I might lean on Jeremy and Quentin for this, but my understanding is we have flexibility in the contract the way the scope of services was written. Jeremy, do you want to?
That's correct. So if they're well-suited and, you know, we feel the best subject matter expert for a specific task, we do have the flexibility within this contract to create a task directly for them.
Okay. And then my next question is, again, and it may not be directly relevant to this specific contract, but when I voted to give us, give the direction to move forward with the way that we're going with the decommissioning, it was with kind of a caveat that we would always, we would have check-ins at points where there may be an opportunity to return the river, the creeks to run of the river, Johnson Creek, Caldwell Creek. This would preclude us from doing that at this point, correct? And that will still be looked at through this contract possibly?
Yeah, that's correct. So, and just as an overarching statement, we will be making major decisions around, you know, the end state of decommissioning without sharing updates with the board. So we plan to have frequent updates to the board, and in addition, to continue to report out quarterly in the quarterly reports. But no, nothing in this contract precludes any of that. In fact, having MacMillan and a comprehensive team like this onboard, I think will help us realize our goals of, you know, what is the most effective and efficient long-term solution.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we didn't get so far along the road that we get to a point where they say, well, we've gone so far, it doesn't make economic sense to even look at that anymore. And that's something I want to make sure I voice.
Yeah, Commissioner Borowski, I was just going to add that this is the kind of expertise that would inform check-ins like that. And so this is actually a necessary part of that process.
Other questions?
All right, with that said, I would approve, move to approve whatever it was, two of Consent Calendar.
All right, move by Borowski, second by Carlson, all in support, say aye?
Aye.
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 Pass unanimously. All right, and then Consent Calendar B, is there a motion for Consent Calendar? Moved by Carlson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Borowski. Any discussions? All in support, say aye?
Aye.
All right, passes unanimously. Going, I'm going to skip number seven, because we just did that. Moving on to item number eight, upcoming year proposed budgets and prices. Moving on to item number eight, upcoming year proposed budgets and prices. Yeah, great.
Good evening.
It is.
And I found a green light. Good evening, Commissioners. We are back this evening with our proposed budgets and prices. They remain, the, the numbers remain the same. From what we shared last month, there have been some updates to our reserve tables that Alicia will go over. But the numbers have remained the same. I am Deborah Hart, for the record. With me this evening, starting at the end, Alicia Voorhees, the Budget and Rates Supervisor, Adam Rue, Rates Manager, and Erin Ballmer, our Acting Financial Services Manager. And Daniel Davidson and Janice Lee are also here. And we're part of the budget team along with Leadership of the Utility to bring you this 2025 proposed budget. Without, I'm going to hand it over to you, Erin. Alicia, I'm going to check my notes.
Good evening. The grid on this slide is, that is the wrong, excuse me, I'll start over. On the screen behind me is the overview of the stages of the financial planning calendar. Last month, we reviewed the proposed budgets and prices and sought board direction on the detailed draft budget document along with the 2025 price proposals for each customer class. We are at the final stage of the process. And so following our presentation this evening, there is a public hearing scheduled, and then we'll seek board action on the 2025 budgets and price proposals. Next slide, please. Okay, this grid behind me is representative of the four budgets monitored for budget authority. So board policy establishes that each utility shall have an operations and maintenance and capital budget. And each budget is the maximum level of expenditure authorized by the board. The figures here correspond to the light item totals found in Attachment One of the proposed budget document included in your board packet. There are updates to Attachment Four and Five, as Deborah mentioned, and those are to refine year-end projection on our reserve and our metrics. But as Deborah mentioned, budgeted figures have not changed from last month's presentation. I will hand it over to Adam for price changes.
Thanks, Alicia. So the proposed price, this chart shows the proposed price change is by customer class. These are the same as was presented in November. These rate increases are based on the cost of service analysis and corporate gradualism using the single year. Water utility rate increases are essential for generational investments, placing seismic, seismic, seismically vulnerable infrastructure, as well as positioning ourselves financially for future investments. The electric utility rate increases are also necessary for replacing key infrastructure. The rate increases for both utilities will help address stationary pressures.
Thank you. So we seek to uphold affordability while maintaining safe, reliable operations and steward a pledge to the environment and our community. The graph on the left presents residential customer affordability as a measure of median household income for EWEB and comparator cities in the Northwest. For EWEB customers, combined electric and water bills equate to 3.4% of median household income. As a point of reference, most state agencies consider a home energy burdened when 6% of income goes to energy costs. And we seek to relieve utility burdened homes through our bill assistance programs as well as continued efforts to control costs and operate efficiently. The graphs on the right present average EWEB residential water and electric bill amounts among comparator utilities. These graphs reflect recent pricing as of September, and we fully anticipate other utilities will raise rates in the near term, particularly for electric comparators who would also be navigating bonneville increases. So for an average, single-family, all-electric residence, proposed rate increases translate to an estimated twelve-dollar increase on the electric bill and a three-dollar increase on the water bill. We anticipate we will maintain our position in the lower quartile among water comparators and remain mid-tier among electric comparators. So in terms of communicating the change, there is a year-round effort to inform customers about the budget and rate-setting process. This is to help them understand how price changes will affect their bill and raise awareness about how rates are being used to provide safe, reliable services that maintain our utility infrastructure, as well as invest in system improvements that make their services better. Messaging will continue to raise awareness of the anticipated October 2025 BPA pass-through and education about how BPA services affect customer rates. EWEB's incredible communications team manages a myriad of communication channels, as shown on the slide, and also prepared a detailed rates communication and information package that was provided to both staff and commissioners and will be updated following passage of the proposed budget. Finally, I'd be remiss if I didn't take this opportunity to acknowledge finance staff and budget stakeholders across the organization that have done the heavy lifting behind this proposed budget. While it's rarely fun to discuss needed rate increases, I greatly appreciate the engagement among staff and management that occurred through the course of this budget cycle. The commitment to affordability remains clear, and I am thankful to play a role among such a great team. And so with that, I will move us, or I'll say, President McCray, if you would, we have scheduled this evening a final public hearing, and then we will be available for any questions following.
Great, thanks. All right, so we will go to item number nine on our agenda here. Public hearing on these upcoming year 2025 proposed budgets and prices. So I'm going to open the public hearing. Have anybody signed up to speak? We don't have anybody signed up to provide testimony, so I'm going to close the public hearing. And then we'll go to item number 10, which is discussion and action from the board. So questions, comments, Sonia?
Just wanted to note that there was a comment earlier about us not increasing our, some of the customer cares program and what we do for lowest-income folks. And, you know, for me, one of the things that we do is we very critically look at how much we're raising rates. And staff did an excellent job of decreasing and working, working it, working it, working it to keep the rates low, and we've kept rates lower and haven't raised rates in many years, or didn't for many years, whereas, you know, I look at Portland General Electric. This article from the Oregonian said that they raised rates in the last four years 40%. Or Pacific Power, they're looking at 50% increase since 2023. I mean, those are massive increases. And so, you know, when you have that kind of jump from IOUs and such, yeah, they probably have to raise more to help cover it. I think what we're doing is trying to keep the rates, even though we have very significant supply chain pressures and other cost pressures, we've done everything that we can to keep rates low for everyone. And that's how we protect our customers. And for those who are on that most bottom tier, we give them some extra, and we'll continue to look at that and continue to make sure that that program is operating efficiently. And I continue to care very much about how rental, rental customers are not able to get the same kind of access. And I know that our customer service team has been looking at that as well. So to the extent that we can continue to, to make an effort there, I think it's great. And thank you to staff for your work to keep rates low in very challenging times.
Great, thanks, Mindy.
Yeah, I would say of all the things that we do on the board, this is maybe my least favorite, just because it doesn't feel very good to raise rates. I am really appreciative to staff that we, that we don't have to raise them as much as anticipated. So thank you for the hard work and the whatever kind of accounting forensics or rate forensic somebody did to dive really deep in there. I appreciate that. And also, I agree with Sonia. I, I really, I know that we are committed and hope that we continue to be committed to make sure that our lower-income customers don't have to go without electricity and that we fully fund those programs.
Thanks, Brown.
Yeah, thank you very much. I have a question about one of the comparators. I know that we compare sub on electric, we compare sub on water, but why isn't Springfield in on the percentage of mean income in that comparator chart? The one on the far left?
So we are, we are limited in, we, we get our income data from Census Bureau reports, and they do not show up in the report that we use. They're, they are lumped into.
No way to get the mean income? For Springfield, does anybody have any idea? Because I'm always questioning why our sub rates is so much lower. And I know a lot of people in multifamily go to Springfield just for that huge savings, because that's their second-largest expense short of rent. And I just wondered why that comparator, we can't have that, or we don't have that? Because I know there's a mean income in, I mean, because we use it for low-income qualifications in Springfield. HUD has it, and I mean, a lot of the housing agencies have it. Why can't we get it?
The challenge for us becomes making sure that we've measured income in the same way across all of the comparators. And so that's why we use a single report. But we can follow up and see if there is other information available that we could feel confident that it was comparable in the way that it was gathered and calculated.
Okay, well, I'm just curious because I wanted to see where that metric lies, because if we rely on it on, on the individual ones, but we don't on the other ones, we use different cities. I did not questioning it other than I just, I know what's available, and I get where but I would think that there's a standard, like when they qualify for low-income housing, there's a standard income for every city in the county, and it's all on the same basis. So just asking if maybe sometime in the future, if others want to see it, that's great. But it kind of tweaks my interest in what that stands.
Great, thanks, John. I think the request is heard. Yeah. Um, I guess I would just, just a few comments. One, I want to thank you for the process that is laid out that you went over at the beginning of that we've been talking about budget for quite a while. So this isn't like the deepest dive. In fact, it's maybe one of the shallower dives because we're just looking at making, taking motion tonight. So I just want to thank you for the time that you've spent educating us and helping us all understand where we're going. And as other Commissioners have expressed, the, the deep commitment to trying to, you know, make our changes as gradual as possible. With that, I want to echo what Sonia was saying, that we have had rates held steady for a number of years. And so we're a little bit unique in that way. And yes, they're going up in a way that I don't think anybody really wants to see. But that follows a long period of, of very stable rates. And I think, yeah, I think that's it for me. So we have three, oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, yes. Yeah, so it sounds like there, we do have folks here who were prepared to provide testimony on the budget. So if it's okay with everybody, I know we were just ready to make motions, but I'd like to step back and make, take an opportunity for folks to provide testimony. So I know we have one person, and so if there's anybody who wants to speak, is that you, Alan? Do you want to step up here and provide your testimony? Thanks.
Thank you. So as a stupidly low-income person, I just want to bring a little bit of a human aspect to the statistics up here. When we say about 3. whatever percent of our income. As a really low-income person, a lot of times my EWEB bill comes to maybe 33% of my income. There have been months where it was 100% of my income. That's not reflected in those charts. And that, there are people out in the, in this community that are in that same kind of place as I am. So please, as we're talking about rates and keeping it down or sliding scale, please keep that in mind. Thank you so much. Thanks.
Great, thank you, Alan. Is there anybody else here who wants to provide testimony regarding the budget? Okay, um, yes, please, Borowski.
Thanks. Couple of questions. I don't know if you have a slide or not, but could you talk about the changes? I didn't, I apologize, I didn't dig into the changes in the reserve policies. Could you just talk to those a little bit? Or do we not have a slide? Obviously, we don't have a slide.
Change in reserve numbers, not, not policy.
That numbers, the numbers.
Go ahead.
Yeah, the, the only change there is just an update, given that we brought information last month that projected where reserves would be at the end of the year and then performance based on budget next year. So with that extra month of time, we've just updated the projections.
Are they higher or lower, or both?
So they didn't move much.
Okay, I'll, I'll dig in. And I'm, I'm kind of the opposite of Mindy. She hates this type of, this time of the year. This is what I live for, is, is budgeting. I want to thank staff for all, all the hard work that they did in getting the numbers to where they are. For me, one of the things that would be helpful is, and this can just come in, in a memo or whatever. So we're, you know, initially, we were saying we were going to have a 15% increase. And, and I think that this board and a lot of people in the community said, let's, let's see what we can do and make that better. And we brought that down to 7.7 and with a 4% increase in October. If you could let me know what the annual one would be, because the 4.4% is only going to be for two and a half months of this year. So our increase is actually, instead of being 7.7 plus four, it's not going to be at 11.7%. For this year, it'll be whatever that is when you, when you figure that out. That would be nice to know, so that I can say this year it went up this much, when that second round of increases come, come along. Because it's just 4% higher for a few more months. So that would be helpful. And again, I want to thank staff for all the hard work, but I also want to thank the board. You know, these, these packets, when it comes to budget times, are hundreds of pages long. And, and going through and reading through them is a commitment that we make as, as unpaid volunteers to give you guys input and policy direction. So I want to thank my fellow board members for the diligent, due diligence that they do in digging into these, these things. And I would look forward to seeing another one next year. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Yes, please, Frank.
Yeah, Commissioners, appreciate the, the comments. I think it's always important to provide some context. Whether you enjoy the process or not, the fact that we are a community-owned utility, we have an obligation to invest our, our communities and have, be a good steward of that, of that financial resource. And so much of this is about the things that we need as a community going forward, not just in the day-to-day supplying of the essential services, but the investment needed to continue to supply those services going forward. And so you're providing oversight on if we were to be market-valued in the stock market, a two-and-a-half-billion-dollar company probably, and you provide the, the guidance that, that we need to be able to, to manage this organization. I would say that Commissioner Carlson, your, your perspective on limited income support is, is well-taken. I think that one of the things we did this year, recognizing that there was a, a rate increase, we increased the funding for our limited income support as part of that. We, we also recognized public testimony relative to the fact that these numbers are based on median income. And Eugene, in particular, when we look at the number of people below the federal poverty level, we use that in our calculation to try to fund that particular assistance appropriately. And, and we'll, we'll continue to look at that going forward. We, we do recognize that we need to, to look at that and, and modernize that to a certain extent. So, and I would also say that that 3.4% percentage of median income in 2015 was 4.25. And so over the, the years, the last several years, that percentage, we've, we've worked to bring that percentage down. So, thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Other comments, questions? All right. Moving on then to board approval of proposed budgets and prices, we have three resolutions. Please.
I have a question. On our agenda, it has us voting on it at 7:05, and that the public hearing is at 6:55. So, um,
Do you want to wait?
I'm wondering if we could just go to the next agenda item, and then before the break, come back to this vote.
Yeah, unless there's opposition to doing that, I'm, I'm doing that. We just, does that work?
That works.
Okay, I'll come back to that item. Thank you for flagging that, Mindy. Come back to that item number 10 after our break, somewhere slightly after 7 o'clock. And then that would put us to item number 11, which is the 2025 Energy Resource Study. Thanks, Mindy.
All right. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Brian Booth, Chief Energy Resource Officer here at E-Web. I have great news for you. If you loved a presentation full of numbers, if we got the thing for you. So tonight, joining me, we have Ben Orick, Lead Analyst for our Resource Planning Efforts here at E-Web, and Megan Capper, Energy Resource Manager. Up on the agenda tonight, we'll be taking a refresh of our product choice timeline. We're going to dive into the initial modeling results and findings, and we hope to have a pretty healthy discussion. Before I advance on though, I did want to do a little bit of table setting about the product that we have here tonight. It is, it is funny in that it is both cutting edge and also a incredible exercise in estimation. We are leading a surprisingly small number of utilities who are doing this level of analysis. And it is estimation and that we are guessing what prices will be in the future. We are looking at BPA prices, which will not be published for years, based on information that they have provided. They have put out a draft document that is hundreds of pages long. We've taken the words in that document and the words on 1,000 PowerPoint slides and tried to turn them into math, which we are then using to, this is my crystal ball here, predict the future. So on top of that, we have overlaid our own resource optimization model so that we can take these BPA products and layer in additional resources that would be needed to balance the power that we get from BPA to meet our loads. We believe that we are leading the region in this effort. We are not aware of any other utility that has gotten this far. And this team and those that are on the call should be tremendously proud of that work. So with that said, I do need to say that these are initial results. I'm going to put a big asterisk here and say that more clarity will be gained over the next few months when we come back to you with final results. You're going to see a BPA contract and portfolio numbers that range from 2.5 to $3.2 billion with a B. You'll see a range of scenario outcomes associated with each of those that range plus or minus, you know, hundreds of millions of dollars. We are looking at long-term trends with resource costs. What does it cost to build a wind farm, for example? We're looking at scenarios for timing on transmission builds, which nobody really knows. And we are, well, we don't know any better than BPA does, what it will cost to operate the federal system. So with that very large asterisk in mind, I would encourage everyone here to view these results as I do, which is how they come out relative to each other. Products that show up as substantially more or less expensive than others are likely to really be substantially more or less expensive than others. And those that appear relatively the same are probably likely to be relatively the same. So with no further ado, I will pass it on to Megan to jump into it.
Great, thank you. So what you have up here is our current timeline. We started the Energy Resource Study to provide the analytics around the BPA product decision earlier this year with a kickoff in March. We also formed an Executive Steering Committee charged with making the product recommendation and guiding the analytical process. While it is management who ultimately will be responsible for recommending a BPA product consistent with board values, we're informing commissioners in public as we go. In July, we provided you with an overview of the BPA product options. In October, held a work session to discuss the qualitative factors. This evening, as Brian has shared, we're going to share our findings from our initial quantitative analysis. We're calling these results, as Brian also said, initial, because while the basic structure of the products are defined, there are still significant elements BPA is working on around rate design and product, bringing product design and implementation. So while we can't make a recommendation based on the quantitative analysis yet, we think that this is still useful, these early findings, and we're going to share them with you tonight. So looking ahead, staff are currently working to update our timeline for delivering a final product recommendations to the board in June, as you can note. Next June, a revised timeline will allow staff to incorporate analysis for some product features that BP is still finalizing and to iterate on additional scenarios and risk analysis with the Executive Steering Committee. Further, a revised timeline will align the Energy Resource Study results with the pro forma financial analysis and incorporate that long-term financial plan and rate impact modeling. So the new timeline, we will share with you in early 2025. So with that, I'm going to pass it to Ben to discuss the initial modeling results.
Great. Thanks, Megan. So I think Brian and Megan covered it really well, the initial part of this. I do want to give a recognition to Aaron Bush and John Kreider, who are two senior analysts in our Power Planning Department, who have really been diving into the details and trying to turn this into quantitative results. And so I get to be the one up here sharing some of the high-level takeaways, but this is very much a team effort. It's going to be even more of a team effort as we expand the analysis to include pro forma financials and things like that. So there's a lot going on here, and so I'm happy to get to share it with you all tonight. So at a high level, trying to go back, what are the, the five different Bonneville products that we've been considering? And I've got this chart here that we showed back in July to the board. And as a quick recap, these, the products vary in how much service that Bonneville provides on both a planning and real-time basis. And of course, there's additional costs for more services. And what we really tried to highlight in some of the qualitative discussions with the board on trade-offs was, you know, load following. This chart, I think, kind of shows it, the, the limited marker there on the bottom right, next to the load following product. There are some trade-offs with that particular product because Bonneville meets all of your requirements for you. They manage your load variability for you. And in order to do that, they need predictability from E-Web's other assets. So it's kind of a trade-off between flexibility and predictability, where E-Web's giving up some of our flexibility in exchange for Bonneville to handle that load variability on our behalf. And so they need predictable hourly schedules from our other assets. So we kind of talked about that at a qualitative level and like, you know, what that trade-off would look like. And we, we lined up these products and thought about them in the context of the new contracts. So starting at the top here, there's Slice Block with the most flexibility in the system, where Bonneville is giving us a shape of their system, or a slice of the federal system, and E-Web can ramp that up and down to meet our needs. The Block product is where they just give you a fixed flat block of energy that they've kind of pre-shaped for you. And then there's the Block with Shaping Capacity product, where E-Web would have the ability to move that energy up and down up to our one and two peaks or average peaks. And then there's this Block with Shaping with an optional peak load variance service. That's a peaking service from Bonneville, where they can give you more flexibility beyond just your one and 10, or excuse me, your one and two or your average peaks. You can actually get a little bit more service from them and get up to your one and 10 peaks. And so they're giving you a little bit more capacity that you can shape and meet your hourly needs from Bonneville. And then finally, load following is kind of your, your highest level of service where they meet all your needs for you. And I just want to clarify that this, we're going to call this New Slice. So we have a great product in Slice Block today that's served us well under the current contract. And what we're talking about in the next contract is the updated terms and conditions of Slice. So I'm going to try and refer to it as New Slice tonight, so we stay on the same page there, and think about what products will meet our needs best in the future. So I wanted to lead with the bottom line upfront. What are our initial modeling results showing us? We have, as we ran different scenarios, we found that the Block with Shaping plus peaking service and the Load Following product seemed to be our leading candidate portfolio options when we ran multiple scenarios. And we, we found ourselves wanting to dive into that more, but I wanted to lead that with tonight, is that our initial modeling results are showing those two as our leading products. And we're thinking that it'll help us narrow in and focus our analytical efforts going forward. So tonight, I want to share, why are those two products leading? So when you go to set up a model, you need to fill it with a bunch of assumptions, as Brian said. And so we set up our base case with midpoints for pretty much everything that we had in our assumptions. So every time we had an option between high and low, we tend to choose an average or midpoint. And then we ran an initial set of 17 different scenarios, saying, okay, what's the high side? And what's the low side of each of these input assumptions? And we were intentionally trying to create product differentiation, trying to explore which inputs were most impactful to which products would be your least cost option. I want to be clear that we didn't choose these based on likelihood. We're just trying to explore which assumptions were most impactful. And we intentionally tried to create product differences. So some of the scenarios that we explored was, okay, what if your load growth is higher or lower than what we assumed in the base case? What if market prices are higher or lower than what we assumed in the base case? What if the cost of those new non-federal resources that you need to supplement a given Bonneville product are higher or lower? We also looked at BPA rates, like what if they're higher than what we expect? We, we also explored a resource adequacy target. So we know that the Western Resource Adequacy Program is being stood up. And part of that would be E-Web would need to have certain metrics that we need to hit. And so we looked at turning those standards on and off and see how it impacted the results. And what we found, we, we tried to put on a box whisker diagram here. And so one of the questions we get is, okay, what, at the top of the chart here, we've labeled it 20-year portfolio costs excluding resource management costs. So what is the, what are these all-in numbers that we talked about that's in the, you know, 2 to 3.5 billion dollar range? So that is the 20-year forecasted cost of your Bonneville product, as well as any non-federal resources that you would need to supplement that Bonneville, Bonneville product over the next 20 years. So in 16 out of the 17 scenarios, we assumed that E-Web would have load growth in the future and that we would continue to see our loads grow. In 16 out of the 17 scenarios we ran, we assumed that there'd be a resource adequacy program in that future. And what that meant is that it had impacts on these two leading candidates. What jumped out to us was that those two products tended to be the lowest cost options in many of the scenarios that we ran. And we asked ourselves, why is that? And one of the reasons that we found was that Bonneville's peaking service that they're providing in both the Load Following product and the Block with Shaping plus peaking service option provided the E-Web with the most access to low-cost capacity from Bonneville. And that turned out to be very valuable as we thought about planning for a future where we might have load growth and resource adequacy targets that we needed to hit. So trying to tell that same story in a bit more context here. When we talked about the different products and comparing them from a capacity perspective, I've got a chart pulled up here where the Block-only product is on the left and the Load Following product is on the right. And, and Load Following is again where Bonneville is meeting all your needs and they're meeting all those capacity targets on your behalf. And all the other products are called planned products, where E-Web's responsible in some capacity to meet our those targets. And so you'll notice that the Block with Shaping plus Peak Load Variance Service or Peaking Service there is the smallest capacity gap relative to the other planned products. And that capacity gap seems to be a key driver of these, these study results. I want to add in another layer to that, is that at this time, we're seeing that there's a cost, we're anticipating a cost difference between the cost of Bonneville's peaking capacity services here shown in blue. So we've got these blue bars with a dollar sign. And there's a difference between how Bonneville has committed to price those peaking capacity services for their products and any non-federal supplemental capacity that E-Web might need to buy in the future. Now, as Brian pointed out, these are, these are assumptions, and, but we're making these assumptions based on the rate design proposals from Bonneville. And Bonneville is committed to offer their peak capacity services at their embedded costs, which today are roughly half the cost of what we think new marginal resources are, like new wind, new solar batteries, things like that. And so that context is a key driver of this result. And so I want to acknowledge that they can converge over time, but early in the study period, it's very likely that Bonneville's capacity cost will likely be much, will likely be roughly half the cost of non-federal resources. That's a key driver in these results. So going back to these initial results, what are we going to do with them? You know, it's not conclusive. We're not in a place where we can make a product choice based on these initial modeling results. Well, what we're going to do first is share our assumptions with the public, try and put our numbers out there. We're also soliciting feedback from other regional experts, other utilities who are trying to make this product comparison and make these decisions and get feedback from them. We're going to be trying to focus more analytical time towards doing a deeper dive on these leading products like Load Following and Block with Shaping plus Peaking Service, and really hone in where our analytics will go and get more guidance from the Executive Steering Committee to how, to give them analytics that are useful in decision-making. And then we're also going to incorporate other financial considerations, like Megan mentioned, around risk and value and resource management costs, like not every product has the same cost per staffing levels and things like that. So the last piece of guidance that we got from the Executive Steering Committee as well was, I've highlighted the New Slice product here. The New Slice product is a little bit higher in our initial modeling results, but we're going to continue to think of it as a product as usual, because E-Web has really good operational context to that product. And so we're going to continue to consider that as well. So we're not taking things off the table so much as we're using these results to help hone in on leading candidates. And with that, we can open it up for discussion.
Great, thank you. Questions from members? Flosberg?
Great, thank you for that presentation. So I have a question. When we're looking to the future, given what BPA's capacity is now, do they have enough to meet everybody's needs? Or they have to build more or acquire more resources?
So Bonneville has done an energy study that they released. They have not released their capacity study. We do believe there, there is a chance that they do need capacity day one of the contract starting. They, what they will do is go out and procure that, and then they will spread that cost among all of us, all of the customers taking their tier-one products, any products.
And so how does that, how does that work with our carbon targets? Do they have the same kind of goals that we do or are they, are they totally different?
I think it's a really good question. I think that that is not something that we have had, we haven't explored that with them yet. But there have been a lot of concerns expressed by the public customers that it needs to be clean capacity.
But there's no guarantee.
I would, I think when the customers have been so clear, it wouldn't, I think it would be very difficult for Bonneville not to do clean capacity. But yes, you're right. There's no guarantee right now.
Well, I appreciate all this work that you're doing because it feels like we're trying to buy a house, but we don't know how much it costs or we don't get the home inspection and we don't know the terms of the mortgage. But we have to sign the contract.
Yes.
It looks pretty from the outside.
So I guess I'm just wondering, like, what are some other issues or things that might come up that, I don't know, might throw us for a loop or might be, might not be in line with our values?
I can come up with answers, but okay.
You go first. I don't want to suck the oxygen out of that one.
No, I, I, I think it's a difficult decision for us to scenario plan. So we did initial 17, right? Just, these are only 17 data points. And I think we were just so interested to find out what are, what are some major drivers of the results? Just so we can hone in on like, what's really important to EWEB? And so we did use these initial modeling results to actively influence BPA product design. Megan and Brian took our modeling results right away to Bonneville and said, we really care about this peaking service. We need to know more details. We need more information. So it is difficult because we don't have all the information and we're actively influencing changes in the designs of the product. And then we need to update our modeling results after they respond to our influence. So it is tricky to iterate on this. So I, there's a lot of uncertainty. And so we're trying to figure out how can we start with some initial numbers and then start exploring uncertainty even more under the guidance of the executive steering committee? Because I think that's where we need to go next.
I think it's also really important to note what, what Frank, I'll repeat, Frank is saying is that we, we have all good product options. Bonneville is a good product choice for us. And so it's the narrowing down and really understanding the difference between those two options.
For me, I think it's some of the regulatory uncertainty that gives me the most pause. The Inflation Reduction Act. We don't know what will become of it under the next administration. We don't know who the next BPA administrator will be. John Hairston sounded very much like he would not be there at the end of 2025, last time I heard him speak. Yeah, there are some big, very expensive moving parts out there. So for us, winning strategy is one where we choose options with low regret risk. What can we do now that we won't regret doing in the future?
Right. Well, thank you. I appreciate your work. I know that it's not easy.
I'm going to go to Frank and then Sunya.
Yeah, Commissioner, Commissioner, I think one of the really important things is that we're not just looking at one number. Whenever you're dealing with a decision involving 20 years trying to buy a house without a home inspection, I don't know exactly how it was described.
It's great analogy.
We are, we are trying to understand the resiliency of whatever particular decision we come up with. And that's, that's a little different than we would historically define resiliency. It's to look at these what-if scenarios and say, how much variance does this create? What kind of problems or opportunities does it create when we, when we look at some of the excursions that could be happening, whether it's markets, whether it's growth, whether it's prices, supply chains, IRAs? You know, there's, there's all kinds of scenarios. And so we're not just looking to buy the cheapest house. We're looking to buy the house that can meet our needs the best going forward. And so I, I do think that when you think about Bonneville, Bonneville is a fixed size system presently, and it has a lot of suitors. And so it's a very popular option with people. And so that's why capacity is important. Megan mentioned that, that at some point that we, we think that the demand for Bonneville's services will be greater than their at least ability today to supply. And so they're going to have to come up with these supplemental options. And so the other part of resiliency is, and really wasn't talked about today because this was the part of the numbers presentation. But we have to overlay this before we bring a recommendation to the board. We also have to overlay this with the other values that we have stated as an organization, which has to do with safety, reliability, environmental stewardship. You know, the equitable pieces of it. And so we have to weigh those things into this as, as well. And so you know, your, your question about the environmental attributes is a very appropriate one. You know, we, we like the system that's there, but, but, you know, looking at growth and from either our resources or their, or a federal resource, there are differences in how those options would approach environmental attributes, for example. So resiliency of the decision is a, it's a key piece of this.
Great.
Thanks for letting me weigh in.
Yeah, thanks. I'll go to Sunya and then Brown. I'll come to you next.
Just real quick, if we can go back a couple of slides. So you had 17 different scenarios. And I was just really just high level. How did you decide what those scenarios were? You said 16 of them had load growth. Were there any others that had kind of not, like they were skewed to one side or another? And how did you kind of make that determination on what those scenarios would be?
We tried to choose scenarios that were consistent. So like, for example, in a future where Bonneville has higher rates and we assume Bonneville rates go up, you'd want to make sure your new resource costs are also going up. So recognizing that it's a driver for Bonneville costs as well as EWEB's costs. So we tried to make sure we made scenarios that made sense. Because you could theoretically turn dials opposite directions and give you a completely nonsensical result. So we really were conscious to avoid those types of scenarios. Yeah, we, we, I would say we really focused in on what did we believe were the biggest dials that would have the most impact on ranking? So load growth was one that I think creates a lot of uncertainty between the products. And we're going to be doing deeper dives into those particular drivers. I, I think one of the goals of this initial results presentation was to zoom out even farther and just say, what are some things that we think are going to be holding true as we continue to refine these and turn the dials more? Capacity being very important and a key driver of value is a consistent finding that we think are going to carry through all the way to the final product recommendation. So that's why we wanted to pause and share those initial findings with you today. So I, I think, I think some of that storytelling of this product is a winner in a future where this happens is exactly where we're going with the executive steering committee next. And so we're bringing everyone along, but I want to be clear that the executive steering committee is out in front of this, helping us hone in on what's actually helpful on making these decisions. So we're sharing this with you now as we're kind of efforting out in front of that and trying to say, okay, yeah, which, which ones do we need to zoom in on more? And what futures do we need to think about where one product is more successful than another?
Because you mentioned that, you know, it's not the likelihood of, I think, that particular scenario. But, but underline these different variables. There are more likely leaning scenarios versus, you know, higher market prices. More of them probably lean towards that or the BPA rates probably lean more towards the higher side, I would guess. So the way that you're dialing them in is more geared towards the likelihood of those variables specifically, but not the likelihood of each of the individual 17 individually.
Yeah, I'd say there's more nuance within each scenario. But something that had less nuance to it was some of these early findings. It's like, well, you know, we, we believe that a reliability program of some effect will be in the future. And we believe that Bonneville's pricing and rates design will, will be impactful to our decision in the future.
So on, in terms of these scenarios, my last question, I'll, I'll go, but the last, are any of these like stand out really much bigger impacts than some of the others? Or are these all just major drivers depending on how far you turn the dial?
Yeah, I think you won't be surprised to hear that load growth is the biggest assumption, right? So it drives your need for new resources. So that's, that's certainly material one. And one that we're going to want to explore further. Frank, I see his hands up.
Yeah, Commissioner Carlson, I would just weigh in real quickly and say that what, we used the term scenarios for the presentation today, but I would almost describe these as sensitivities of individual variables, which is you described. One of the steps we will go to next is a collection of sensitivities, which becomes a scenario of sort of a future world, right? If, if the future looks like this, then these sensitivities exist and they play against each other and then we'll test that.
And then you would add in that, that likelihood sort of situation where it's like, okay, well, we've got these 17, but maybe number 10 is far more likely. So we add in some probability around it.
That's correct.
Okay, I'll stop diving into the details. Thank you. Appreciate it.
I think it'd be easier if Brown just brought in his crystal ball and we could just ask it. But Brown, questions?
You, you, you guys are going to get that before this. Hey, first, I'd just like to say, I know that the staff is going to bring us a recommendation because this thing is graduate level, if not all at the top. And I really, really appreciate the way you're explaining the basis for what your final recommendation is going to be because you're bringing us along and what I believe could be a great way to educate us and let us know why you're doing what you're doing. I do have a question. You said you had to have part of a resource. And the fact that load growth is a high thing on, that's not just our load growth, that's the system load growth. Is that correct?
All right, I'm going to repeat your questions. I think it broke up for a little bit there, but when you asked about load growth, you're saying that's the system load growth, not just EWEB's load growth? Is that?
That's correct.
We just looked at EWEB's load growth. Our market price forecasts assume regional load growth. So it's, it's baked into our market price assumptions. But we, the variables we played with were, were our own load growth trajectory.
All right, we'll do that. We're going to lose gas throughout the, the region. And, and I know that if Bonneville goes to small-scale nuclear, is that a product that we're going to acquire? Are we even allowed to acquire? I mean, I know it can't be produced in Oregon, but if, if, if for peaking, I don't see any other option. If, if we're going to have to have peaking capacity someplace in the system, is that something that you would envision that we're going to be looking at?
So Commissioner, with each of these scenarios, we do have a, a resource build, which you probably saw in the last IRP, that projection of, you know, what new resources could be built to meet, to meet our portfolio in the least cost, the lowest environmental impact way. Ben, look in your way. I do not believe that SMRs were pulled in any of those scenarios.
No, not, not, and no. We've updated our new resource options and, but we are not focusing on those tonight because we don't want to be distracted by that particular topic while we focus on, on comparing the Bonneville products.
Just to elaborate, and I think Commissioner Brown was, was getting to this as well. It is somewhat product, product dependent. If we leaned into Bonneville for, let's say, a load following product where they are responsible really for acquiring additional resource for us, then we have to buy, we are essentially buying their mix of product. We, we cannot go to Bonneville and say, we want all the green electrons instead of the blue electrons. That we're going to get a mix from Bonneville at that point.
Yeah. I bet that you answered my question. So so again, for bringing us along, at least me along to a level where I'm hopefully going to be able to really understand what you Thank you.
All right. Thank you, John. I have just a few questions. I'm wondering, I'm, I'm looking at the question you're asking and kind of asking in reverse. So you're asking, the question you're asking is like, which of the Bonneville products, as we understand them, is mostly, most likely to suit our needs, given kind of what we know about what we think our needs might be in the future? And I wonder if looking, gazing into this crystal ball at all causes us to think about the, the factors within our control, and I mean, EWEB's control in terms of load growth, especially and peaking and capacity need, are there things that, as you're looking at this, you're, you're thinking, hmm, there are some things that are within our control we ought to be focusing on that we're, well, even if we are focusing on already, does it emphasize any of those things that we're already paying attention to?
I think so, particularly with the look over my shoulder to make sure I've got the, I know which slide is behind me. Particularly with the, the planned products, those other than load following, they're all probably pretty complimentary to our, our current operations and the way that we currently go about building and maintaining our, our own portfolio. A nuance that I did want to put out here is that with this slide in particular, this is talking strictly about capacity, peaking capacity. And we did not in this deck hit on what energy resources we'd be looking at, you know, to meet all the hours that aren't our, our peak hours of the year, right? And in any of these scenarios, there's a pretty significant need. We're looking at substantial load growth over time with electrification. We have thousands of electric vehicles in the service territory and that number grows 40% every year. I believe, Ben, please nod your head if I'm right, in the load following base case, we were looking at $470 million worth of, you know, new resource build. And that's in the, the load following case, again, like the one where we would build the least under the block product base case. I believe that was more like 1.8 billion. Looking Lisa's way, I don't think we're building 1.8 billion worth of stuff. Yep, I saw a shake of the head over there. The 470 mil is still a substantial amount of work.
So that would be our own, or our own new generation that we would be investing in, is what I'm hearing.
That is the way it was modeled out. A BPA can go out and invest in quote tier-two assets similarly, but BPA can't own resources. They can simply contract for them. So the question for us is whether we would want to, you know, own our own resources or
Contract with, or yeah, contract with him to contract with somebody else.
Exactly.
I see. All right, Frank?
Yeah, President McCray, the full answer to your question doesn't just come with a Bonneville discussion. So part of our 2023 IRP, and in fact, what we're calling our Energy Resource Study going forward, looks be, this is a component of that, but we're also looking at a demand-side potential assessment study, for example. What kind of demand response capabilities do we have in this region? What kind of energy efficiency at what cost is still out there? So there's, there are some other pieces that need to be considered and are being considered. So the answer is yes. Not just the Bonneville component, though. It's, it's the entire energy resource planning effort that has to be looked at that, as well as the, the other piece of this, which is the management of these assets. We've kind of, we've, I think it was referred to kind of in this discussion as, as a pro forma, you heard the term pro forma. That's really kind of looking at our business model options, which is, you know, what do we own? What do we manage? What do we procure? What do we contract? What are all those mixes look like? And that's got to be done in parallel with a Bonneville decision.
Right. My last question, as I know that anytime you dive into something like this, it just brings up more questions. Like what are the next couple of questions that you're going to go try to answer?
Well, I'll answer that. That one thing I'm consistently hearing from everyone is likelihood. Bring in likelihood into the, the scenarios or variability. So I think I, I see us spending efforts there. We're getting a lot of questions on product feasibility. What are these products really look like? What would it, what would the real-world experience at EWEB look like? What kind of staffing impacts? How would we optimize around it? What would be our other resource strategy if we did this? What would? So I think that pragmatism layer to this, I think, is where we're, we're going to be going next. And, and that's why we have the executive steering committee, because I think ultimately they're going to pull the strategy parts that Frank's speaking to, the realities on the ground and pull that all together. So I think that's kind of where I see it going is trying to layer in more details and complexity, starting with these initial results as a, as a starting point.
Makes sense. Thanks, Brian.
For me, I want to torture test it.
Yeah.
We have some exciting historical events that we've lived through here, the ice storm, for example, last summer's heat wave. I would love to test some of these products and see how they perform with some, some back testing.
Yeah, yeah. Great. Interested, very interested to see what the next iteration produces. Thank you. Yeah, Borowski.
Okay. So a couple, I've got three different questions. The block with shape plus PS as opposed to load following are two, are two high, are two semifinalists in The Price is Right. If we go with load following, we have to dedicate our resources to Bonneville. And to me, that seems like a iffy scenario, considering what we've seen with our generations and the history of what we can generate dealing with FERC. So that means they're going to say Carmen has a nameplate of 12 megawatts and an average production of nine. I'm not sure what it is, but I'm pulling that out. We would have to guarantee that to Bonneville, whether or not Carmen's spinning or not. And if it's not spinning, we have to go out and find that on the open market, correct? So to me, that gives me pause on that one. I think, but if we go with the block with shape with PS, we get to use our carments and our resources how we feel is the best to use them. Is that scenario correct?
Yeah, I think you're in the, I think you've got the spirit of it. Load following, we would essentially work for Bonneville, right? And they would serve our load. With any of the other products, they work for us to serve our load.
One, correct. One caveat to that, Commissioner, is if for some reason Bonneville wasn't operating to the performance level that was expected, we would not have to go out and get additional resources. Bonneville would fill that gap and charge us for it. That's the load following scenario is, is it would not be up to us to go.
No, 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 but they would, they would buy it on the market and we would have to pay, we would have to pick whatever that was.
Now, Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, just of a round or I'm pointing at you, but I'm not sure if, who up there to ask, not all of our resources have to be dedicated.
That's correct. So statutorily, only our hydro resources have to be dedicated to load. So right now, we have our IP contract, we have Sierra Pacific, we have a number of regional wind farms, all of which are undedicated, and we can use them to serve load, we can market them to the region, however we see that. That is much more challenging under a load following contract. I love your housing analogy. Looking at some of these products, like when I look at flat block, boy, there's a lot of moss on the roof, and that's probably a bad sign for everything else. When you look at load following, that's a nice house at a nice value, but the HOA, hmm, they're kind of a nightmare to deal with. So there is a, there's a value proposition to be right there.
And again, for me, I see, see all the money that we have put in and are going to have to put into Carmen. And I think that that's something that we, it's a, a peaking utility that we can, we can monetize and try and get some of that money back if we keep it under our control. So I'm leaning that way. As far as scenarios, or what did you call them, that scenarios?
Sensitivities.
Sensitivities. Have you put in, and I know it's tough because we haven't really had much work on it, but demand management and how that would affect the RAP? Because if, if demand management works in the way we want, it could lower our RAP contribution, I'm thinking. Is that a sensitivity that we have enough data that we can put that in from other utilities?
We, we are getting the, some initial results from the demand side potential assessments. So the question is, how much potential is out there that could be used for that? So that's a factor. We haven't layered that in yet. Those final deliverables are coming soon here. I, I think the order of magnitude on demand response is in the, you know, let's say five megawatts range. And so as your needs grow beyond five megawatts, which is pretty likely in, in the future, you'll still need to supplement with other resources. So that's my initial.
Great.
But we haven't, you're right, we haven't run that scenario yet.
Okay. That was just, I mean, that's just one that I know that as a utility, that's something that we are, we spent a whole bunch of money to get this new enterprise system up there so that we may have the opportunity to use that, that tool going forward. And so I know that that's something that, as a board, we're excited about, and I just want to know if that was a sensitivity that we could plug in. So those are my questions. Thank you for your work.
I do want to add, I just don't want to add, excuse me. During our feasibility study is when we're really going to test about the RAP, because with load following, Bonneville takes on our RAP obligation. But with our other planned products, we, we take that on. And, and it's the price signal that it provides the incentive under certain, I guess, the certain ways that we would define and, and I guess, structure our products. So that's what we have to explore more, and we'll do that in that product feasibility.
And then I guess one other question that would be nice for me to know is, how many, in the last three years, how many times have we hit one and two? And how many times have we hit one in 10?
Yeah, well, we'll get back to you with some numbers. They are one and two monthly peaks, so pretty often on those. The one in tens, we'll have to take a look. My emotional response is that they're like hundred year floods, and they seem to happen every few years, but we'll freshen that up.
And then when does RAP kick in? Is it at above one and two, or is it one, one in 10?
So to clarify, so EWEB is scheduling or targeting to go binding in the RAP in 2027. And so all of the modeling results you see assume that a product and being binding under RAP. So these all are solving with those reliability targets in mind.
Commissioner Borowski, I would say, when you saw the planning reserve margin number there or line there, that is approximately a one in 10. There's, in some cases, a little above, a little below. It's, it's about, it's pretty close to a one in 10 number.
Great. Thank you. Do you all have what you need from us? Thank you very much for the time and unpacking all this for us.
You very much.
Thank you.
All right. For those playing along at home, we're going to go back to item number 10 on the agenda. Actually, we'll go back to nine and just see if there's anybody here to provide testimony for the hearing on upcoming year proposed budgets and prices. We opened that already, but want to make sure that there's an opportunity if anybody came in late. And I'm not seeing anybody raising their hand for that. So we're just going to go to item number 10 again, which is board action on upcoming year 2025 proposed budgets and prices. So we have three different resolutions. We'll go through one at a time. Resolution number 2422, the 2025 budget, is there a motion to approve? Moved by Carlson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Schlossberg. Any discussion? All in support, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Thank you, Brown. Resolution number 2423, electric prices, is there a move to approve? Moved by Carlson, is there a second? Second by Schlossberg, any discussion? All in support, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Brown. Passes unanimously. And lastly, resolution number 2424, water prices, is there a move to approve?
Move to approve?
Moved by Carlson is our second. Second by Schlossberg, any discussion? Hearing none, all in support, say aye. Aye. Thank you, Brown. Passed unanimously. So that wraps up item number 10. Anything I missed there? Thanks to the team for presenting all that material for us and making it understandable always. All right. So we'll take a break and come back to item number 13.
To order the December 3 meeting of the Eugene Water and Electric Board. And we are going to go to item number 13, rate design priorities, record of board direction. Frank?
President McCray, commissioners, good evening again for the audio record. Frank Lawson, general manager of E-Web and joining me up here for this topic is Adam Ru, E-Web's rates manager. You did receive a packet regarding this particular agenda item that included some draft, a draft rate design plan. And just wanted to run through briefly what we'll talk about this evening and get your feedback on. We will review a little bit why rate design is important and why now as well as kind of taking a look at some of the trade offs, reviews, some of the highlights of the rate design plan and then gather some feedback from commissioners. We're not asking for a discreet approval this evening. This is to open the conversation. We recognize that until you put some of this to text, that it's sometimes difficult to ask for open ended comments on something until you have something concrete to take a look at. And so that's what we'll be initiating tonight. And one of the things to make sure that we recognize is that rate design is one of those topics that's impactful. It's also important that we define the scope of what we're talking about when we speak about rate design. And so we'll try to incorporate some of that. Relative to rate design, kind of why it's important, why now? I think what we've recognized as an organization is that when we look at the past and we dealt with really passive consumption, that in order to meet our strategic objectives, to be able to optimize the delivery of our services, we are going to need to engage our customers. And so their behavior and how they consume our product will matter. And therefore, how we can incentivize them to and reward them for beneficial behavior and sharing those benefits is an important aspect of rate design, which is why it's timed where it is in our strategy. Kind of where it fits also relative to some of the things that actually have occurred this evening. You understand that we look at financial planning. We develop revenue requirements. We look in detail at cost of services. We try and allocate those costs in certain ways. And then rate design really focuses on the method of recovery of those costs and how we've allocated those. Some of the cost analysis, which Adam, this is one of your loves, right? I mean, this is Adam really deals with a lot of the cost of service analysis and how we look at cost causation. That is an area that we will talk about a little bit more as we go forward, looking at how rates are developed. Especially when we transition from a cost based driver to a behavior based driver. This was the trilemma of rate design that we kind of introduced last, I think, believe in October, recognizing and I think that, yes, these are elements of rate design that in some cases be can be intention. And some cases they're they are complementary, but really deal with the fact that there are ways that you can look specifically at consumption rates, which is what we're what we're talking about here. And the recognition that in order to establish proper behavioral drivers, behavioral rates, you have to have a really good cost basis to begin with. And I think that that's something that will be a part of the first phase of the rate design plan. That was that turn. So just as far as the highlights, one of the things that we recognized, and this is really part of the the important part of defining the scope is that sometimes rate design gets intermingled with fees and also with programs. And I think that's kind of what you you heard earlier. When when we think, for example, about our limited income support, that doesn't necessarily mean that it's incorporated in the consumption based rates. It can be through a separate program. And so these are all related. And I think we have to look at decisions around rate design in those contexts. But when we talk sometimes specifically about rates or rate design, it has to do with consumption. But we also have to recognize that we have fees and we also have have programs. And I think that we're trying to capture the essence that those are those are related. We also really understand the importance of the board and customer collaboration in this process. Again, it's a very impactful topic for customers. It's also one that people feel passionate about. It's also a complex one. And so we recognize this is going to be a long journey as we develop and transition and look at rates because it's so impactful to every single one of our customers. We also, the feedback that we got from the board just recently was that there's there's an importance to having a cost basis for these rates. That's that's fair. We also, the reason that those rates need to be based in that way is so that we can look at behavioral trends going forward. And from a consumption perspective, good consumption behavior should make us more efficient, more streamlined. And how we develop those and incentivize those and share in those benefits will be part of the transition to behavior based pricing. And then it was kind of reiterated that limited income support is important. Again, not necessarily directly in the consumption based rates, but programmatically it is important. The board expressed that in October. We do allocate a certain amount of budget, recognizing that there is a part of our population that we serve that falls into that burdened category. And the size of that budget is developed in order to move those customers from a burdened to an unburdened state. And so, but not necessarily using the rate, the consumption based rate itself to to make that happen. Finally, just the phases of the the rate design approach, kind of looking at some some planning and analysis pieces to that. Over the next couple of years, 2025, 2026, we'll really take a deeper dive into cost causation, not just from an average cost basis, which is where we've been historically, but also looking at marginal costs and potential future cost forecasting. That will likely result in certain elements being implemented, potentially as early as 2026. Some of those might be recognizing that there is a certain fixed versus variable component to this. I think we've all recognized that we have a high number of fixed costs, a high amount of fixed cost. The very first gallon of water and the very first electron delivered are the most expensive. The marginal costs past that are of course lower. And we'll have to have some discussions around what that looks like from a rates perspective relative to consumption behavior itself. We also recognize that one of the important pieces, and it's come up in a number of different ways, it came up earlier this evening, this importance on the energy side of understanding and mitigating for peak. Peak energy demand is by far the most expensive. It's also by far the dirtiest of the electricity. And so understanding if there's elements that we can start to recognize and put in place sooner rather than later is something that we'll evaluate in phase two. And then phase, sorry, that should be phase three. Actually, there's two phase twos, but phase three would be 2027, 2028, where we really start to get into rates and new rate designs such as time of use rates, potentially looking at new programs around demand response and understanding the value of certain types of beneficial behavior. And so through all these phases, we do plan to have a number of different discussions with the board and the public so that people can understand, we can understand their perspectives and they, we can also use that to make recommendations and look at engaging impacts. And so before I open it up for questions, President McCray, I did want to acknowledge that not just externally, but internally, rate design is impactful across the organization. And so a lot of of effort and thoughts and planning from Jen Connors and our communications group, of course, Adam, some people within customer solutions, Anna Wade, for example, Brian on the on the energy side, Tyler Nice on the operational side. I mean, these, all of these people have been starting to look at rate design and the impacts across the organization. So it's, it is one that not only has tentacles to all of our customers, it also has many impacts within the operations and the strategy of the organization. So I want to acknowledge their work and really appreciate them for for developing this this initial draft as really more of a looking at the process going forward. So with that, you do have the backgrunder and I would like to open it up for ideas, suggestions, questions, comments, and I'll just turn it back to you, President McCray.
Great, thank you, Sonia.
One thing that I just wanted to kind of touch on a little bit, I know that we in some of the paperwork and such have kind of talked a little bit more about the social rates piece. And I just wanted to define, and I know the person who this guy isn't here, but maybe they're watching online. You know, for me, the the social rate piece means testing and dealing with that is just, it's just so inefficient. I mean, the amount of work that customer service would have to do on a consistent basis to make sure that we were somehow fairly applying that is is inconsistent. And and you know, I worked for State Representative Barnhart for a long time and we had to look at means testing, tax credits. And people are just very good at finding loopholes, you know. And so the, I'm, I'm happy that we are not doing this here and that we're being upfront about that. And I just want to nip that that particular piece in the bud because I just don't think that it's the right path for us. As we go through this process, it's not that we don't care about our customers and the impact that our rates have on them. That's not it at all. It's that that particular method for it is so inefficient. You know, a number of years ago, we looked at our customer service programs and we took away some of those kind of means testing pieces. The the way that we were doing it because we were, it was so much admin for the cost of it that we said it's just, it makes more sense to just drive more money into that program specifically. And we'll have a bigger impact and actually make sure that the people who need the money are getting it. And so when I look at this process overall, I I appreciate the pathway and how we're thinking about it. And that's one that I just want to consistently stay away from personally. Thanks.
Yeah, Frank. Thank you, Commissioner Carlson. I really appreciate the sort of the upfront approach that you're taking with that. There's some, there are some administrative challenges to it. There's, there's other utilities that have done some of that that work. It's an ongoing process and it is difficult to implement. I would also say that from a long term perspective, it really opens up some potential for unintended consequences when you look at the fact that you're now charging a a consumption based rate based on who some, who somebody is, their profile or what they're using it for. And so I think that's, that's kind of a dangerous path to tread down, not that we, I think we can all think of certain segments of our population that we would like to to provide assistance to. And a programmatic approach, I think, is probably preferable in the in the long term because of the what you stated and also this this sort of dangerous tread that you can go down based on who somebody is or what they're using it for.
One last quick thing, if you go back to the slide that has the triangles. The other thought that I had on this, you know, the behavioral piece and the cost alignment are very integrally tied. Not that the social piece isn't, but these, you know, the behavioral one actually feeds back into the cost alignment. So, you know, when I see that that alignment and the pictorial diagram, I just want to make sure that people you know, out in in the community, don't think of this and say, oh, well, we don't care about the social or community priorities. Because the way that looks is like, well, we're cost alignment, we're behavior alignment. I think the the takeaway from that, from my perspective, is that those two things feed into one another. And again, if we are cost basis and we're trying to keep costs down, we're looking out for the values of the community and those that are most vulnerable. So it's not that we don't care about that. It's just that the, those are the two target points for the the biggest impact.
Commissioner Carlson, I would, I would also, and I think this is, this is also to expand on what you're saying, is that if you create beneficial consumption patterns or behaviors, there can be a mutual sharing of those benefits. It is, some of that should go to incentivize the person's behavior, but there is a portion of that that is then generally shared. And some of that's programmatically with things that that do align with social and community priorities. So it's, it's not that that one is excluded from the board and E-Web's general values or sentiments. It's that that doesn't necessarily occur in the consumption based rate itself. So I think that's.
Mindy?
So I very strongly believe in the behavioral piece. I think it's really important that we get customers to establish habits that are, that are going to help everybody in the long term. But I just want to maybe counter a little bit of what Sonia said is the only, only thing that gives me a little bit of pause or just I want to consider is that if you're a renter and you and you live in a house that's not weatherized or energy efficient, it's really hard to take advantage of some of these behavioral things, especially like at a peak time or in the winter, right? Like I can, I can invest in insulating my own home so that when we're having a peak time, I can keep the heat down maybe a little bit, not so much. But if I live in a drafty house where I have no ability to do that, it's really hard to say like, you should, you should participate in, in, you know, kind of the demand side or cut back during peak times. And same thing with time of use perhaps. And I know that we keep talking about this around and around. And I think every single commissioner and staff has expressed support in trying to figure out how we can better serve our rental community. And I just, I still feel that's a huge missing piece. Like it's basically, it's wasted energy.
I wouldn't, I would commission. I wouldn't, I would, Commissioner, Commissioner, a couple of quick points. So we are doing this demand-side potential assessment to understand the, the opportunities that we have in the community, what the cost of those investments and the return of those investments are. There's a portion of the, of the rental market that is, is included in that. And we'll see what the opportunities are directly for energy efficiency, conservation opportunities within that and, and how we can leverage that. That's also the most expensive energy efficiency and conservation that we can do. And we have to really evaluate as an organization, why, what is driving energy efficiency work? Is it a cost-saving measure or are we trying to save megawatt hours and therefore carbon impacts, et cetera? And because those, those actually could lead to different outcomes. The really important part of the behavioral-based, some of the really critical decisions around behavioral-based pricing models will be exactly what you described, is that not everybody has the same opportunity. That's why the sharing discussion is an important part of that, so that you would get benefit. Whether you have the direct opportunity to do it or not, you would see some benefit from overall the organization going that direction. So that's what, what's kind of meant by the sharing discussion is, is exactly that. How much of it can go to an individual and how much of it is shared with the community? And I think that's, that's going to be an important part of that discussion.
And some of that, I understand, is shared with the community because if enough people conserve, then we don't have to go out and procure more resources. But also, I mean, it does personally benefit people who are going to then pay less for their bill. So it's not just an altruist thing. Anyway, I.
Right, that's, that's exactly right. And, and part of the analysis there will be, and this is why it does, it is a different, I don't know if this is, it's not a stool, it's a, I'm not sure what kind of diagram this is. It's a different leg here because there are times when we'll have to evaluate how much of an incentive drives behavior? And how much is that, how closely aligned is that with today's cost versus a future forecasted cost? That's, that's going to be part of the analysis that we're going to have to do. Because if it's pennies, someone might go, oh, that's not enough for me to change. If it's dollars, then someone might, oh, I'm willing to change. There is a benefit, who gains from that benefit? So there's, there's going to be some social behavioral psychology analysis that we're going to have to do as part of that.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Brofsky. And then Brown, I'm coming to you next.
Thanks. And, and I'm gonna add on to what Mindy said. You know, when this first came up, I brought up the, the scenario of a restaurant that can't, you know, it's, it's going to be using its energy during the peak hours. So it doesn't have the opportunity to take advantage of maybe some of the, the demand pricing and stuff like that. And, and the more I thought about that, I thought, well, I have to build, if I'm a restaurateur, I have to build that into my, to my costs. You know, there's times of the year where romaine lettuce is expensive, and there's times of the year when romaine lettuce is, is cheaper. And I have to set my menu prices based on the overall average. So as a, as a business, I think that I'm less concerned about that penalization. You know, it's not really penalizing, but not being able to take advantage of the incentives as a business owner as much as I was when, when we first rolled this out. On the other side, the individual homeowners don't quite have that because they can't set their menu prices, right? They've got, they've got fixed costs, the gentleman earlier saying he's on a fixed income and he has that stuff. So for me, the balancing point is going to be how much can we raise the prices or lower the prices at different times to incentivize it without penalizing and, and hurting people more than we want to? That's going to be the really hard balancing point for me, you know? So there's people and businesses that will be able to adjust to it. And then there's people and business, and businesses that won't. And so finding that balancing point that will help us move the needle on consumption, but also not harm a percentage of our customers. That's going to be the, the challenge that I'm going to look forward. And then I guess the question, the other question that I have is, you know, I see, I think we already have this type of demand stuff on our water side, right? If you use more kilowatt, you know, when I water my lawn in the summer, that first gallon is one price, but the hundred and first gallon is a lot more expensive. So we've, we've got kind of a model of that already going forward. Do we see, do we see that changing people's the amount that they water, right?
Sure, I, I think that when we looked at, you're talking about tiered rates, actually. And when we looked at, at tiered rates, there's, there is a difference between the electric and the water side. The, the tier is really designed to kick in when you're doing things that are non-essential consumption. So that's why they are set where they are. Now, a number of our, our utilities have winter versus summer rates, for example. They have seasonal rates for, for water and some, in some cases, energy. In many cases, energy, whether and how we look at, at tiers and what those are for. On the electric side, it became, the, the tiers were such that it became a disincentive for electrification and some of the other beneficial things that we, that we saw. And it really was not a direct signal for conservation, for example. So there were, there were some differences there. But all of those are things that, there are models out there that we can evaluate. And if there's something where there isn't a good example, we would have to take a look. And is there some kind of limited evaluation or study or pilot program that we could do? I think that's mentioned in the, in the plan that we might do some pilot programs to just test whether the behavior is sustainable or not. And so, I, I will point out your comment about there may be some winners and losers in this, is how I would describe it. We do have a zero-sum game. This is, this is about cost. So we, we are not arbitrarily taking someone and saying, you're going to pay more and you're going to pay less. It's going to be at some point linked in some way to beneficial cost and efficiency for, for the organization. So even though not everybody would have the equal opportunity, the, the goal is to overall use it to the community's benefit.
And, and yeah, and I'm in agreement with the, the board priorities. I, I think it's just going to be that when, when it gets down to the details, the balancing of how, how those are rolled out is going to be where I'm going to want to weigh in a little more.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Brown?
Thank you. I want to say, number one, I agree with what Sonia's pricing, but I also strongly agree with Mindy. This makes no economic sense to me for us to continue to have to subsidize low-income people that have really highly energy inefficient facilities. We do it month after month, year after year. They're consuming more power that's costing us more to do. Why don't we just, you know, we need to help find a way to, to, I'm sorry, I'm losing thought. Weatherize the rental pool so we can stop it. Because it just makes no sense to continue subsidizing it because that goes on forever. Until we stop the inefficiency that's creating that discrepancy, the, it's not ever going to end. And we're going to buy more expensive, so I, I want to really push maybe when our next programs come up for next year, that we figure out how we can do that. We've been talking about it a lot, but we need to start doing it. We need to start putting in LED lights and we need to start putting in, you know, heat pumps and things such as that to help the low-income and stop having to put money towards it. But it makes no, no economic sense for me. So I like what's on the board and like, like John B., I'm looking forward to seeing what the details are. Thank you.
Thanks, Brown. Yeah.
One, one comment, Commissioner Brown, is the, we will be looking at the cost trade-offs in the, and as well as doing a sort of a deep dive into the, the capability, I'll guess the, the amount of rental capacity that's out there at what cost. That's part of the analysis that we're doing right now, which would inform where we would want to make those investments. I, I would correct potentially your comment, the use of your term subsidize. Actually, if, because we do not actually absorb all of our fixed costs in a fixed rate, what happens is larger, I'll, I'll say higher consumers are actually subsidizing lower consumers. Because some of the fixed costs are, are really recovered through the variable rate. And so, I'd probably have to get on the whiteboard to describe this. But so, a higher inefficient home is actually not subsidized by their neighbors. They're actually subsidizing their neighbors in that case. And so, but you're, I think your point is correct. We do need to look at overall the, the energy, the demand response, the return on investment for, for all of the stock across Eugene, its businesses, its rentals, and look at the return on what those investments are. I think that, that is certainly part of what we want to do in this demand-side potential assessment study.
Thank you.
Brown, were you referring to the bill assistance program? Is that what you meant?
Yeah, I mean, I, yeah, we're given, let's just say they were given a hundred dollars, $200 a month to, and we do that forever. And they're sitting there and the disparity keeps getting greater. Why don't we just stop that disparity where their, their consumption is reduced to a point where they're, they don't have to take that subsidy anymore? Instead of giving them that hundred dollars a month, we cut their consumption down by, by energizing and weatherizing their home. And they're, even though they don't own it, you know, we, we do LED lighting, we do ductless heat pumps, we do whatever we can do. And, and we kind of look at, look at it holistically. I mean, all the new low-income housing projects are highly energy efficient. Yet they have people that qualify in there for energy assistance because of their income level. But yet their income consumption is way low. I, I would like to see just go into the existing inventory of older homes and rents that are highly inefficient and, and help that, that group of people. So, I mean, it's a publicly owned utility, we've got to help these people somehow. And we're not going to be cutting rates anytime soon. It's, it's getting harder for me to vote to raise rates. So that's just my point.
Yeah, thank you, Brown. Yeah, Frank.
This is really the, the joy of, of this topic. I, I will say also, this is where the blending of the programs versus the consumption-based rates comes into play. If, if you only looked at this from the mix of fixed costs and variable cost, and you invested heavily in energy efficiency and conservation, and yet you had a high fixed cost, what would happen, and it's historically happened to utilities, is that you're now spreading your fixed costs over a fewer number of consumption units. So megawatt hours or kilowatt hours. What do utilities do then? They raise their rates. And so, if you're doing energy efficiency and conservation to save money, in the long term, it, it doesn't necessarily accomplish that. And so you really have to walk that mixed, although it, I know, I think I, you, you have to look at the, where you are spending your consum, your variable rates, your variable costs versus your fixed costs to really understand that issue. Because now you're starting to get into peak demand and other things that can, could have other cost impacts. So it's, it's, it's a bit intertwined, but this.
Don't have to increase the fixed costs to increase consumption.
Right. I remember, I think a, a former general manager who I, I knew said that what's, what's really interesting about this is that you have very low variable costs, but you can have really high incremental fixed costs when you reach a certain point. So that trade-off is, if you're only looking at a, at a base fixed cost and a variable cost, the, the variable cost, the marginal cost is really low, right up to the point where it's really huge because you have to go build another plant or procure more resource.
Just like where we're at.
Both, we're, we're playing both ends of that at this point because we're talking about both the resource side and the consumption side. That's why rate design is, is an important topic for us right now, is that we, we had a whole discussion earlier on a, somewhere between a 2.4 and a $3.4 billion resource discussion. And now we're talking about consumption patterns. So that's why they're both important at this point.
Thanks. All right, I'm going to take a few minutes to make a couple of comments. We do get caught in the trap of talking about rates when really people pay bills, right? And that's, I think, it's actually one of the things I most appreciate about, about the way we compare the price of our product is the comparisons of different folks in the monthly bill for the average household income, which is just really helpful as a way to make it more relevant, make the rate question more relevant to our, our monthly expenses. So to the extent that we can, because of the very dynamic you were just talking about, right? If we're doing a lot of energy efficiency rates go up, but also bills can stay the same or maybe go down, depending on, right? Depending on how we do it. And I think that's one of the things that you call out here on page nine of the handout we're working from is the programs that we already have for renters and low and moderate income renters in particular, which is, I, I think something, it's like the unsung hero of E-Web, in my opinion, is that we have these programs that can really do amazing things, exactly what Brown was talking about, right? To retrofit homes, weatherize homes, reduce the total energy demand in especially lower and moderate income and rental houses. So we have these programs, they're doing great work. And I think it would be worth us turning those up to 11 and seeing like, how much can they do? Because I, I suspect there's another increment of benefit that we can get by applying this more aggressively, especially for renters who just may not know that these programs exist. Anyway, I think doing more there, it would be a, a good use of our time, you know, kind of irrespective of the, that, the, the rate design in particular, but more addressing what Mindy and, and Brown were speaking to. I also think while we're talking about rate design, and you make a great point about programs that are kind of layered on top of this, that it might be helpful, just across the bottom to like, remind us of like, here's the different programs that are, you know, accompany our rates so that we can, just to help us have that conversation more comprehensively. While I know we can't dive into the details of every program every time, it would take forever. It can just be like a placeholder reminder of that, you know, this doesn't happen in, in isolation. And, you know, some of the comments that we get about the pressure on low-income households in particular, we could say, and, right? This program is, is intended to help that. And let's talk about that two months down the road when it's on our agenda. I personally can't wait for time of use pricing. We've been talking about it ever since I got on the board and it hasn't arrived. And it's two years out, which I'm a little bit sad about. But also, I can be patient mostly. So I'm going to be patient and I can't wait. And I hope when you do a test run, that I get to be in the test group. Maybe it's a leverage point that isn't as big as it seems, but from where I sit, it feels like a huge leverage point to solve so many, or at least not solve, but address so many of the challenges that we have, both in terms of, of costs, but you know, just managing peak, all of that. We had a heat wave a year and a half ago, two years ago, anyway, a year and a half ago. And, and we, E-Web asked people, we just put out a message wherever we could and asked people to voluntarily turn down their AC because we knew we were going to be buying huge amounts of electricity on the open market and it was going to be a killer. And we got this crazy rate of adoption where people just like, oh, I didn't know. And yeah, I can turn down my AC a little bit for in the middle of the day, even though it was a heat wave, right? And Brian Booth did a little bit of back of the napkin calculations. And I don't remember the number, I have a recollection, but I don't think it's. And I don't remember the number, I have a recollection, but I don't think it's accurate. But the point was actually was a really big number. He's like, the amount of money saved by people just voluntarily turning down their thermostat was huge. It was, it was more than a million dollars.
So I think the conversation was around what the cost of capacity would be to effectively serve that.
Yes.
And ballpark, making a lot of peaking capacity is maybe 2 million bucks.
Right.
So yeah, looking out at that crystal ball again, Frankie, do you mind if I speak in the peanut gallery? I mean, pretty quickly, we're coming up on 10,000 electric vehicles are service territory. Depending on what model they are, they probably charge at seven to 10 KW. They all plug in at five thirty, six o'clock when they get home from work. Future, that's 70 to 100 megawatts. By that, by 2 million, we're talking serious capital investment.
Yeah.
And if you just get people that not charge right at five thirty, six o'clock when they plug in, like, that's all savings.
Yeah. It just seemed like there's a ton of value and benefit there to be gained that we just haven't tapped because our, our rates haven't been set up that way. And I, I'm so excited to see what we can make happen on a consistent basis to benefit both the customer and the utility and solve a bunch of our problems. That's all I have. Thanks.
One, one other comment, Commissioner, and just be respectful of the time because I know we're a little bit over. One of the things that, that we don't necessarily refer to in rate design, but is kind of part of the bill comment I think you made is, for example, prepay programs where um, things such as deposits and other things can be basically waived because you're dealing in a prepay scenario, which, which would tend to help people with, with limited funds. I would also say that when we're talking about programs, we are going to have some discussion around the ECC program, E-Web Customer Care Program. It's a pretty blunt instrument right now, probably doesn't have the reach that we would like, even though the intent and the basis for it is good. So we're going to have some internal discussions about how we would look at that and, and make that more effective. So all, all of those things, the programmatic things are not necessarily off the table. Those are going to be continually looked at as part of how we approach customers, their bills, and what they're paying and, and who can benefit behaviors, all of, all of this weaves together.
Great. Uh, other comments, questions? Did you get what you need from us?
I, I think so. It, the, the subject, and you know, we had public testimony tonight. We've received feedback. It's, it's definitely an impactful issue. This is the opening to the conversation. That's why we describe this as looking at different elements of rate design before we fully get into rate design because we're going to have to actually understand the, the equities of it, the, the operationalizing of it. Love to do time abuse potentially earlier just for you. On the other hand, we need to understand the impact across the board and, and what those consequences are. So, and how we operationalize that. So, and we may put in different elements before that. So we'll, we'll see. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, the next item is future board agendas.
That's all just right here. I don't have much comment on future board agendas. One of the things that we're evaluating pretty closely, I know that um, when we develop the annual calendar, we look at certain recurring agenda items. Unless there's a lot, a particular board action associated with some of those, just to keep us focused on the bigger, more substantial issues we, that we can take deeper dives into, we may start pushing some of those to correspondence. We can still open up, have questions and dialogue when needed. But unless there's a significant board action, we're going to kind of take a look at, at that mix so that we can be talking about things like rate design and BPA contracts and, and some of these um, issues, goals, you know, that, that we'll be pursuing um, bench strength in the workforce, for example, and things like that. So um, that, we'll, we'll work on that and um, work with initially the president and vice president on, on what those agendas look like.
Comments, questions on that? I think that's a good idea. I think there are some items, the recurring items are starting to really become a lot. And so I think that's a great move. And, and as always, I know Mindy's mentioned this and I've echoed her sentiment. The work sessions are great. That's a great way to break up um, our otherwise long meetings to do a deep dive on something that really takes some time.
The, the other thing that's helpful, I think for, I'm getting the impression it's helpful to commissioners. I know there's been some concern about the staff time investment, but the two-on-one conversations, the non-quorum conversations are very productive for staff as well. And so um, we may look for more opportunities to do that just to give commissioners a chance to have uh, more of a dialogue with subject matter experts on different topics. So it's, don't worry about that being a staff drain. We'll, we'll monitor that. But that's another opportunity we have.
Uh, anything else on board agendas? If not, we'll go to board wrap up. Yeah, Mindy?
Well, I've already thanked you, but um, I want to thank you for also getting us out 30 minutes early on your last meeting. So.
Did you hear that, Brown?
Excellent.
Thirty minutes early.
Um, but also a huge thank you to you, Rod. There's not that many staff that we board members interact with, but you are one of them. And um, it's really been a pleasure working with you. I appreciate all of your patience and um, your skill at explaining things to us and communicating. And also you're just a really nice person. So thank you very much.
Rowsky?
Just an update. Last month, we had city manager Sarah Maderi come here and talk about the proposed fire fee. I, obviously I've been following that. That went, that proposal went to city council last month. The city council kind of paused on it, said, we're not ready to move forward with that. Gave the city manager some direction to come back with kind of a Plan B. So Plan B probably will start getting revealed here in the next may, a little bit in the next week and probably the first part of January. Whether or not they pivot back to some sort of a fee or not, once they see the implications of Plan B may uh, may come out of this. We don't know where it's going. But for right now, the fire fee is on pause. It's not, hasn't been, got the votes to move forward. So the idea of us maybe partnering with them to collect it is also in that limbo stage, I think, at this point. So I just wanted to kind of give the rest of the board a heads up if you hadn't been following that.
On you.
I also wanted to say thank you for leaving then last year and last four years. Really appreciated it. Rod, I really appreciated your, uh, your work around the DEI work and, you know, that you also pushed for that. So kind of the resiliency in the DEI um, work, I just really appreciated that. And I think of those two items, I think, so thank you. And now my table is going to be empty.
Brown will be back to keep you company, I promise.
New people. Thanks.
Frank?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank commissioners for, I can't believe 2024 is, is in the rearview mirror or soon to be. I think we, we accomplished a lot as an organization. Very happy with, with staff and leadership within the organization. And then your guidance has been very helpful uh, throughout the year. And um, I'd like to say we're done, but we're not done. There's a lot on our plate um, heading into 2025. Probably for the next several years, it's a really critical period for the organization. A lot of transitions and opportunities with that. So on behalf of staff, I just wanted to thank you for your guidance. And, and once again, uh, thank Mr. Price for, for all of his work and partnership and, and friendship within the organization. And we'll probably be on the golf course every, hopefully every once in a while. So, so uh, thank him and, and just wish everybody a happy holidays and a happy new year.
Thank you. Anything from you, Brown?
I'm good. Thanks. Everybody have a happy new year.
All right. I'm going to take just a couple of minutes. I promise not to take very long. But um, I do want to say a few thank yous before I head out. One, first of all, to my wife and daughter, Adrian Holly, who had to deal with my absences during these meetings and other meetings and me being on the phone calls and probably worse, me ruminating about ridiculous things like electrification and energy storage and all these other things that I'm pondering at weird hours of the day. So thank you for their patience. The staff here are remarkable, consistently remarkable, thoughtful, skilled and, and extremely professional and, and to a T. I mean, just, I really appreciate the, the caliber of work that comes out of this utility. It's something that you all, we all can be proud of for sure. Uh, I want to thank my fellow board members. It's remarkable to work with a board that feels so functional. I have seen so many that aren't. And um, even though Brown's on it, we still were able to get things done and make decisions. Yeah, you're welcome. I know you're in Mexico and I'm still poking you in the eyeball. But really, I really appreciate the work that we've all been able to do together and just the um, the way that we carry conversations together and make decisions together. It's respectful and thoughtful and we challenge one another. And I think that's, it, it's healthy and, and valuable. So thank you all. Also, thank you for the opportunity to serve as president. I didn't know that that would be important to me. But then you all said, hey, you're not going to be here the next year, so why don't you take president role? And um, so thank you for offering that and making that available. It has been really valuable to me to grow and learn more about what, what is required. And lastly, um, I, I know you all know this, but we have this huge asset here of a publicly owned utility. And um, it, I, 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 I think some of the people in our community understand it, but I don't think they really understand it, how lucky we are to not be a profit driven entity. And when I look at the curveballs that are on the horizon, I'm grateful to live in a town that really values a public utility. And I just look forward to seeing this public utility continue to lean in and do the right thing and not, you know, of course we're paying attention to the bottom dollar, but not be profit driven and being, doing what is best for the community. So I, I really value that. I revalue the fact that everybody at this utility understands that and has it in their, in their bones. And lastly, I look forward to seeing um, continued investments in conservation and energy efficiency. I look forward to those studies when they get, I am going to nerd out on them when they come. I'm sorry. But I look forward to seeing what this board does with those. I think that there's, there are opportunities to save money there a, as well as with electrification. I know we've talked some about that. There wasn't readiness at this board to set a target, but I think there could be real value and money savings by setting a target on electrification and as well as money to be saved by protecting doing drinking water protection for the Coast Fork and Middle Fork. Um, I know that some, there were, something will go into that weren't ready to go there yet, but look forward to seeing those investments and commitments made in the future. That's all I have. And I'm also looking forward to Tim Morris stepping onto the board. Thank you for um, for taking the position and, and best luck to you. I'm sure they'll treat you nicely. Anyway, thank you all. Much appreciated. All right, you.
You too.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.